No City Council and the Redevelopment's Accessory Agency and the Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the Council on Staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Tracy Michael.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The Council did meet in a closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with the California Department of Parks and Recreation regarding the property that's listed in our agenda, which is the California Indian Heritage Center project. No action was taken. So now we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our agenda, the Council's prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action on any items that's brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We ask that anyone that is wishing to address the Council on this or any other agenda item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's between the front door and the camera and to turn it in to the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item the Council is currently considering. We take the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on an agenda item. Item 1A has no staff report at all, so the cards are due now, but if you're here for Item 13 or 20, we take the comments cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff presentation. Once the public testimony and the Council questions and discussion have begun, we don't take any additional speaking cards, so if you're here for an item later on the agenda, be sure to get the card in as soon as you can. We also recognize, then, for some folks, that speaking in public can cause anxiety and nervousness, and we're all family and neighbors here, so we do ask that there not be any boos or demonstrations or any cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have several requests to speak under Item 1A, and the first is by Patrice Welcome back. Ms. Griffith, at the base of the microphone, there's a little button, and then it'll go on green. That will mean it's on.
There we go.
There you go. Perfect.
Thank you.
Make sure everyone can hear you.
So I'm here again to speak on some of the things that were said two weeks ago, most importantly, by the mayor. And two weeks ago, you said that you support volunteerism, and I am here to tell you that I do as well. That is why I have spent countless hours serving as a board member, helping women and children affected by domestic violence, why I serve on Our Lady of Grace's parish council, am a member of the River City Booster Club, why I accepted the position of President of Our Lady of Grace's Moms Ministry, and why I also willingly chose to sit on multiple ministries at Our Lady of Grace Church, which helps hundreds of people in West Sacramento, most of them suffering from harsh unforeseen consequences and circumstances. Today, I come to you as an active member of this community to explain why I have met with various and numerous members of our community regarding the Nest. The "why" is because I, like you, understand that volunteerism is the only way to make things happen. This is something that you specifically said two weeks ago at the last council meeting, and it has resonated within me. Volunteerism and concern for our children is why I stand here, expressing concern to all of you, and why we, the majority of the Our Lady of Grace Parish community, several West Sacramento residents, the Our Lady of Grace Principal Laura McDonald, our priest, Father Matthew Rapu, and diocese are strong in our presence as a sign of support for this community's children, because their safety and their well-being is at the forefront of all we do. Two weeks ago, you said that the term "pedophiles" and "sexual predators," as they relate to this specific issue, were loosely used with no data. You, as I well know, that pedophiles and sexual predators exist in our community. One who was caught earlier this year taking pictures of innocent children playing baseball at a park was arrested. His phone confiscated. His home searched, only to find a plethora of child pornography at that location. However, due to an unfortunate technicality, this individual has been freed, once again living in West Sacramento, like many others, lurking on our streets, making those who are aware of his background scared for our community's children. I say this not without data, not without warrant, but I say this because I was approached by two people in particular who do not even know me personally. They live next door to this individual, and they said that they wanted to share their fear with me. They wanted to share their story. I agree with you that this has been a rough two weeks and a challenging conversation, but my hope is that, going forward, this conversation about the Nest can be transparent and beneficial to all.
Thank you. Steve Ramirez Palmer. Welcome back to you, too, Steve.
Well, thank you.
It's been 50 years, or however long we've been at this, but welcome back.
Well, I'm here, Our Lady of Grace, and I have two kids we support there, and not only that, I'm still involved working with youth, and I'm on the Juvenile Justice Commission. I work with a few high-risk kids. I'm legally retired, but I'm, you know, really concerned about this project. I love the project. It's a great project. The location's really bad, and this is why I see it's really bad. If it's right there, that's a hangout for kids, right there, target. Twice a month, kids are out early from River City High School. Now, our population at the high school's over 2,200 now. It's growing. Our school resource officer, you know, is very busy working there, although I have to admit that things at the high school are going really good: crimes, fights, and things are down. But they do hang out on the bike trail. My wife and I, I like the bike trail. I love the bike trail. I hope they pave it beyond Davis Road, but kids do hang out. If you don't have a first period, you don't have a last period. Kids are hanging, and they're drinking once in a while, and they're smoking weed. I saw the other day a couple bikers that weren't students, and they were, you know, smoking weed on the bike trail. I'm concerned that smoke's going to flow by the playground equipment there. Kids are going to be affected, and so I am really concerned that it's a great project, but it's got to move. It's not right there by the school. And kids do hang out. If you're around River City High at all hours of the day, you know, kids are around. So I'm really concerned. I hope that, you know, I talked to Andrew. He hadn't talked to the school resource officer. He was going like this, saying, "If that goes in." The grassroots people, the campus aides that work lunch hour and work the campus, you need to talk to those people over there. You know, they're always, it's a big campus, over 2,200 students now, and that's my concern. And I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thanks, Steve. Natalie Hinkel.
Hi, all of you. Thank you for your time. It's my first time speaking, so.
It is?
It is.
For all your community activists, well, welcome for the first time, Natalie.
Well, thank you. That was going to be one of the points I was going to mention. My husband, Phil, and I, as most of you know, I've lived here 16 years. We moved our business here and raise our kids here. We've been active, engaged members of the community. Phil was actually one of the faces of the campaign that helped us get the federal flood levy grant. I've always talked about what a great city West Sacramento is and why I've rooted my life here. I love it here. But after hearing your comments a couple weeks ago, Mayor, I felt that you didn't consider us as part of your West Sacramento landscape. I completely understand the defensiveness of the letters that parents sent to the sponsors of the project, but please recognize that this is a desperate cry to be heard. Many of us felt stonewalled, and we felt that we weren't being listened to, although there are some of you that actively engaged with me, and I thank you for that. My question to some of you is, why were you not open to any discussions prior to those letters coming out? Why were you only willing to engage with the OLG community until then? Now, this isn't to take us backwards, just in response to your comment, because we want to move forward. As some of you know, some parents exercise their right under the Public Records Act to obtain various items from the city that includes police logs, the plans of the sewer lines that go under the trail, and things related to the Nest. This apparently is being spun, politically spun, saying that we want to take the city down. This is not true. We love the city. Many of us know you personally as friends. This is not a personal attack on the city or anyone that works for the city. A request for a PRA is not an "out-of-the-ordinary" request. We're doing this to educate ourselves, to understand why there's such a determination to have the rest stop there, perched over the playground looking at our children, and why we're being stonewalled. We're just trying to educate ourselves and understand. When Mayor Cobalden, when you said that parents have not been open to anything other than relocation, that's not true. I've actively discussed with Andrew and others about alternatives such as a concrete wall, changes in the design. We've also talked about the burdens to the school of extra security. A lot of the alternatives would be at a cost of OLG, which already runs on fumes. OLG is not a pretentious rich school as it's been projected to be. We actually have a very diverse group in our school. The only consensus that anyone seemed to agree on from the Nest side would be planting trees, which is actually a bigger safety issue, and I think would make the problem worse. It's been expressed to me, the purpose of the Nest is to activate the trail, to take the town center and engage its patrons to the people on the bike trail. If that's the intent, then the current design and placement will completely miss the mark. I'm asking that you consider more features that engage children and evaluate the safety of the location, and maybe taking that path that's been brought and bringing it down onto the city property and moving it over just a bit.
Natalie, we've got to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Sabrina Lockhart.
Good evening. Also, first-time speaker, longtime fan.
Welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable Council members. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. My name's Sabrina Lockhart, and my family has proudly called West Sacramento home for the past 15 years. Last month, my husband and I sent you all a letter outlining our public safety concerns with the current proposed location of the Nest, and I want to thank Council members Orozco and Sandin for being the only ones to acknowledge the receipt of my letter. Our letter explained in detail our family's concerns, and since then, we've been actively engaged in this group, looking for a positive solution and a positive outcome. We love the project. We just don't think it needs to be right there. Even 100 feet away would be better from our standpoint. In addition to my letter, I'm seeking a few other points of clarification. For instance, I noticed on the city's website that the police department offers free reviews for crime prevention through environmental design, so I'm wondering if that was done. Some of the mitigation suggestions so far have been bushes, screens, and hiring additional private security, and I was wondering how law enforcement feels about these solutions. And just last week, at the coffee with a cop, I learned that there's only one dedicated officer to Southport, and would that change as we continue to grow and develop the bike path? I'm not only here for me, my husband, and my wonderful son. I'm here on behalf of nearly 150 West Sacramento residents who signed a petition asking city leaders to consider a better, safer location for the Nest. These aren't just parents of OLG students. It's a diverse group of West Sacramento residents. So I beg you, Mayor and Council members, please listen to these families and help us work towards finding a safer location for the Nest. Mr. Mayor, last week, while you were in Israel, you issued a statement saying that protecting our children is our most sacred duty. Clearly, you must understand that our desire to move the Nest comes from that same goal, that sacred duty to protect our children, and not just our kids or their classmates and friends, but every single child who will ever step foot on that campus. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And Rachel Machado.
Hi. Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
It's the theme of the evening, so welcome.
Good. Mayor, I've lived in West Sacramento for almost 16 years, and I've supported everything that is done here. West Sacramento is wonderful at providing services to the needy, the homeless, the less fortunate. I work in a Catholic church, and I can tell you on a daily basis, those that frequent the church, coming for food, for money, for clothing, are not just down and out. Some appear to be mentally ill. I have volunteered at the school, both inside and outside the classroom, and I watch the kids with a very watchful eye, because I've seen people come up from the duck pond, I've seen people sleeping in the bushes, and I'm thinking, with the building of the Nest, this is just going to make it a more desirable area. We have so many services here that it would be easy to assume that we attract more of the homeless. We do take care of them. I work at the church, and we do that on a daily basis. I use the trails, and they're not just frequented by your neighborhood walkers and joggers and people bike-riding to work or students. I've been accosted on the trail. I see people sleeping in the bushes, and I see the remnants of their night there. And my heart goes out to them, but they're not all just down and out. They're not all just needy. I ask you that if, based on your comments from the meeting on the 6th, that if this is a done deal, if the Nest is going to be built, if you could just consider moving it down a ways, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Those are all the requests we have under Item 1A. This is normally the point of the meeting where I would say, "Now, we're moving on to Item 1B," because we're not allowed to have a conversation or take action on the item. I do want to say one thing, just in regards to the comments from two weeks ago that were made here, including by myself, and to thank those of you that came out tonight, again, and the heartfelt comments, the work in between the meetings, and watching the tape from two weeks ago as well. It was the same thing two weeks ago, and so I have listened carefully to what was said then and what was said tonight, and I hope you know that, and if you don't, I'm saying right now, that it's what's happened outside of these meetings that has been disturbing, frankly, for businesses and small businesses and for some of the other nonprofit volunteers, not just Assemble Sacramento, but others in the community who felt bullied and attacked as part of this process. And I know for many folks, it may be the first time you've become an activist in the community about a particular project, and some of your fellow activists may have led you into somewhat negative, you know, attacking, attack mode, trying to find a resolution. And I've heard from a couple of you who said, "Look, I know that that's been happening, and that's not me. I just want to find a resolution and a solution to the problem." And I hear you. I hear you. I know my colleagues have heard that as well, and are approaching all, you know, the issue and the topic in good faith in that way, because that is, what I said two weeks ago in terms of trying to promote community volunteerism applies to all of you as well, in addition to the folks who have felt in other groups like they've been under attack. But know that you have been heard, and you are being heard, and the kinds of frank and honest and heartfelt comments that we heard tonight, I think, go a long way in that regard. Let me say one thing about the Public Records Act, just because it was brought up, and it's been an issue. The city clerk is shy about this in terms of just the sheer amount of public money that is spent on responses to the Public Records Act that are rarely, that are mostly fishing expeditions, and none of which have actually ever resulted in any news story, any investigation, anything. When we get a request that says something like, "Please provide every communication by every city staffer, every council member, every volunteer commissioner," so every citizen who agreed to volunteer to be on the Parks Commission, for example, and goes to a meeting four times a year, then has to provide all their text messages, all their Facebook messages, all their emails, everything that's their private, they didn't know they were signing up for that. But the amount of time that it takes to go through all of that, through tens of thousands of emails and other records, and review them one at a time, is not trivial. And so when we don't have the resources to add another police officer, it's in part because we've been spending a huge amount of time, not just this request, this is just one example, but on Public Records Act requests that are perfectly legal, they're perfectly legitimate, and everyone has the absolute legal right to file them, but they're not free. They're not free to the public. And so if you're ever thinking about one, you're thinking, "I want to file a Public Records Act request to get actual information," go for it. Please go for it. But if it's just a gigantic, "Please send me every email that has the word "is" in it," just know that what you're doing is hurting your own city and distracting a large number of staff people here in this organization, who then have to provide and search and then personally review and send off to the attorney to review every single one of those communications. It's harmful to the organization that's trying to serve you. But with that, that's not the issue that's before us at this time. So thank you again for the comments and for continuing to work through the issues and through sharing your stories, your perspectives, your views from a lot of folks who I know have been working in many ways in the community to make this a better place to live. So with that, we'll move on to Item 1B, which is Council of Communications. Are there reports or other communications this evening? Councilmember Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Water Resources Association of Yolo County Board of Directors met this past Monday. We received the annual independent audit report and heard updates on our water legislation, including SB 5, which is the California Drought, Water, Parks, Climate, Coastal Protection, and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2018, which includes parks and natural resources funding of over $2 billion for parks and over $1 billion for water funding, and it's expected to be on the June 2018 ballot as a bond measure. And then the Yolo SubBasin Groundwater Agency Board of Directors also met on Monday, and we continue to work on our JPA formation administrative tasks, such as approving our conflict-of-interest policies, securing insurance, hiring legal counsel, and designating a treasurer. We also heard presentations related to the development of our groundwater sustainability plan and also a $1 million planned grant proposal to help fund the development of the plan. That's my report.
Thank you. Any other reports or communications? As was noted in Item 1A, I was in Israel last week on a delegation of mayors that had been asked to visit Israel and its cities, and also the West Bank and Gaza Strip and the territories that are under the jurisdiction of the Palestinian Authority, partly economic development purposes, to meet with a variety of companies that are in Israel that are part of the startup movement there, and also on public infrastructure and on approaches to law enforcement, but principally to security in the midst of disasters and terrorist threats, which Israel is really second to none in that space. So it was us and the mayors of seven other cities around the country, from Kansas City to Syracuse and all across America. I learned a lot about the situation there, but that really wasn't the purpose of the visit. We did visit the cities in Israel that have been subjected to pretty constant missile attacks and rocket launches and all of that. We also were at the Syrian border and met with fighters in the Free Syria Rebel Army as well about the situation there, as well as in the settlements and in some of the major cities in the Palestinian Authority, but also water infrastructure and a lot of work in terms of civic technologies. Israel's one of the world's leaders in startups, but particularly in the area of startup technologies that are of benefit to cities. At the time, the Israeli presentation on their startup culture and their startup movement was led by a gentleman who is the founder and CEO of a startup called Zen City, which is a technology that uses artificial intelligence to spider through social media, the city's complaint database, Foursquare, a variety of other things, in order to aggregate and analyze public mood, but also identify in advance issues that are emerging in the community that we might not capture through other means. It's a way to use technology to improve our ability to see the signals that are already out there in terms of civic engagement. So they presented on that. A lot of the mayors were very excited about that project. I told Councilmember Johansson that at one point, the CEO of that startup said, "Yeah, we are working with eight cities in Israel, all of the eight major cities in Israel, plus the city of Paris and the city of West Sacramento, and then the other seven cities," so again that West Sacramento is a global leader. This is a project that Mayor Protem Johansson had originally brokered, and we met with them in Korea at the Smart Cities, the New Cities Summit there as well. So it was good to see that project live on the ground there and also to meet with the programmers, because we are working with them as part of the Missouri Smart Cities piece with the deputy city manager. So we'll have additional, some additional follow-up materials from the visit to share with Council, but it was a powerful, profound, complicated visit to both Israel and Palestine, but some important economic development prospects, including a company that is interested in doing a major water project here, potentially in West Sacramento, as the national demonstration project for their products as well. So a good visit, but glad to be home. And I do want to say, I was not here for the tragedy last week, and I know the whole Council wants, would want to, for our own staff team to acknowledge and thank the men and women of the fire department and the police department in particular, who went through a wrenching experience, like so many others in the community, but firsthand, I know folks can just barely imagine what it must have been like to be first on scene and to grapple with the sheer emotion and the tragedy that was right before them. And so our thoughts have all been with them, as well as with the family and with the friends of the people. But I also want to acknowledge members of the Council, who, as far, I was in Jerusalem at some of the holiest sites in the world at that moment, and could feel the profound impact that members of the Council, in partnership with the school district and the county and community groups and parents, and the school district in particular, provided the platform for West Sacramento as a community to be what it always is, and to show that that night at Southport Elementary School, you know, even in Israel, I could see and feel the light and the warmth that was coming from this community, and it's no small measure, thanks to the work that I know Councilmember Ledesma, Councilmember Orozco, and the whole Council was engaged in in order to bring that, help bring that to life and to show, give West Sacramento the chance to love and to care and to mourn and to grieve and to act together that they really value. Thank you so much for what you did. All right. Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, of which we have known this evening, so we're going to proceed to the consent agenda, which is Items 2 through 9. Are there any items on consent? Any member of the Council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment?
I might ask, 7 and 8 be pulled off for just information only? Just a couple of questions?
Yes. Okay. Okay. Any other items? All right, then, is there a motion on the consent agenda minus Items 7 and 8?
It's moved by Councilmember Sandin, and seconded by Mayor Protem Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Item 7 is consideration of update of the draft Southport Setback Levy Recreation Trail report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And really, just, I wanted the opportunity, because I read through this, and if staff wouldn't mind, I know I didn't give you a heads-up that I might ask you, but it is worth noting, the report is kind of an update on what it represents. You provide kind of an update on where we are in this process. So just for the community's sake, I really wanted to make sure that the public was aware of this report and kind of the direction we're heading, because I know there's been some conversation, including recently, about the feasibility and the trail system that we are working toward, given the comments earlier in this session around projects along the trail. I think it is important to know that there- worth noting, the report is kind of an update on what it represents. You provide kind of an update on where we are in this process. So it, for, just for the community's sake, I really wanted to make sure that the public was aware of this, this report and kind of the direction we're heading, because I know there's been some conversation, including recently, about the feasibility and the trail system that we're, we are working toward, given the comments earlier in this, this session around projects along the trail. I think it is important to know that there, that there is actual work being done to facilitate a trail. So if the mayor doesn't mind, like the, if staff wouldn't mind, just kind of articulating the highlights of this report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tracy Michael with the Parks and Rec Department. So just a little bit of background on this report. This really kind of started back in 2016 with the council's strategic plan, which included an action item for the Trails Initiative and the Parks Master Plan Update. And out of that came a more regional focus for the Trails component, identifying that there were a lot of other related planning efforts underway at the time that did offer some regional funding opportunities, as well as just a, a more broad look at how we can deal with and, and work with trails in our community and beyond. So we launched the Regional Trails Initiative. We applied for some grant funding for that effort, and we weren't successful in receiving all of the grant funding we hoped for, but we did receive $30,000 from DWR to, to evaluate the feasibility of incorporating recreation elements into flood planning projects. Through the Regional Flood Management Project Delivery Team, they actually identified the Southport Setback Levy as a great candidate to evaluate the feasibility of recreation, particularly trails and trail amenities. And so we used the DWR funding, $30,000, and our Regional Trails Initiative Consultant Team, HDR, to move forward and study the feasibility, which resulted in the report that's before you tonight. The report did have some really interesting and positive findings, that first, it's possible to implement a trail project that's compatible with the built configuration of the South, Southport Setback Levy project. That it is, was verified that by adding a Class 1 bike path to the surface of the levy crown, it did not affect levy performance. Also, in the future, if we wanted to add ADA accessible ramps on the land side of the levy, that would also not impact levy performance. And, and so what was recommended in the report is an opportunity to create a 10-mile loop in the Southport community using the, the crown of the levy in conjunction with connecting to existing trails or planned trails, including the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail, and then creating a multiple interior smaller loop, so that we've got a really great trail network in, in the Southport community. The report also included some opportunities, identified opportunities for trailheads for access to the Southport Levy Recreation Trail, and, and identified as recommended next steps to pursue potential land acquisition related to providing that trail access, as well as pursuing recreation easements as part of the levy project, so that we can move forward and implement trail improvements with primarily grant funding when opportunities become available. It was also recommended to make sure to incorporate this information into our Bike Ped Trail Master Plan Update that's currently underway, as well as our Parks and Open Space Master Plan Update that's also underway.
Thank you, Tracy. And I think as, as I read through it, I really did articulate some of what we started talking about a year ago with the Trails Initiative. And the most important part for me was that it's feasible. I always wondered if, were we going to be able to ride on the levy? Were we able to get into the setback levy, which is something we thought about then, as we were contemplating the Southport early implementation project and the setback levy. So to me, this was sort of welcome, we, I mean, honestly, while we buried this, buried this in consent, I was wondering about, because this is sort of a way for us to kind of show, it actually shows what we envisioned, that it's possible. Some of us turned immediately to Appendix A on the report, which talked about costs, that they are real. But it's one of the reasons why we wanted to do things like pass Measure E, where we have possible funding sources for this going forward, to look for opportunities to leverage for some of the grant money, to see this done. But to me, this was a really positive step, that we were able to get to a feasibility, have some implementation, some priorities. I do agree with the recommendations that are in here. I, I did, and I can take these at a different time, because I know it's really early in the process, at some point, want to learn a little bit more about the Class 1 bike lanes and how those operate, and how they would operate, leading to what would be the levy areas. I have learned since I'm close to the Village Parkway and use the Village Parkway and the, and the Branch Line Trail, that we do have, in fact, I got a compliment on Village Parkway this morning, by somebody sitting in the audience who uses it quite a bit to bike down to Clarksburg, and, and loves the bike ride that are available there. But we really need to look for ways to connect the east-west, to the trail, to the parkway, to the crown, that would be the, and that's, that's the part I'm interested in. I think that's where we can obviously kind of build some really great infrastructure for all sorts of users of the trail. And I think there's even one drawing of possible use of equestrian unpaved areas and bike trails and whatever else, because I think that will be the heart of what South, help maintain the, the rural nature of Southport that we know, and we know it gets developed with liberty or whatever else. I think that's really encouraging to see that articulated. So anyway, I just want to thank you for bringing this, and, and I just want to make sure I called that out.
Great, thank you for doing that. Mayor Protem Johansson?
Maybe just a quick question. Are we, when we're looking at Class 1 bike trails, those are compatible with neighborhood electric vehicles. And the reason why I'm asking is, is when we move forward with this, when we look at, for example, the H-friendly plan that was adopted, a lot of folks can't bicycle. So, you know, a facility like this that has a capability to be opened up to folks that can rise, ride bicycles, we may want to take a look at, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but when we get into the design and maybe the traffic patterns within there to possibly use a neighborhood electric vehicles on this trail as well.
All right. Thank you.
And I did, I know you're, Mr. Mayor, I, I wanted to bring up item eight as well.
The staff recommendation on seven is that we confirm the recommendations presented in the report, so it sounds like action is, is requested. So are you moving it?
That's a motion, yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Ms. Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item eight is consideration of Resolution 17-61, approving the application for grant funds from the Habitat Conservation Fund Program.
And I guess my question around this is, again, this is an example of us already starting to work to find grant money, correct? To help fund that area, okay?
Correct.
And, and so we're looking at this to go along the, the Southport, to start acquiring land along the levy project? Is that correct, how we're going to use this?
It would be for land acquisition for a trailhead location that is identified in the report, one of the.
Is that the Linden and, okay?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Ledesma?
So moved.
Gets moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mayor Protem Johansson. All those in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That then concludes our consideration of the consent agenda, and we'll proceed to item 10, which is continued public hearing and consideration of Resolution 17-7, amending the city of West Sacramento water and sewer connection fees and amendment to the city's book of fees in consideration of Resolution 17-44, approving the water and sewer master plan update. Mr. Blumberg?
Yes, this item had been to you before, and the public hearing was already continued. Tonight, we're asking that you continue it again to the date of October 18th. The reason being is that the master plans themselves have a lot of technical detail. They're used as, as working documents by staff when they look at things like conditioning development and what water or wastewater infrastructure is necessary to serve specific projects. And there were some technical details that staff needed extra time to, to work on, and so we just decided to, we were almost there, hold off a few more weeks to get that completed. So we would request that you continue the hearing again.
All right, all right, you've heard the requests. Any objection to continuing the, the public hearing on the resolution, on both resolutions to Wednesday, October 18th? All right, sing none, that will be the order, thank you. That brings us to item 11, which is public hearing and first reading of ordinances 17-8, 17-9, 17-10, and 17-11, regarding proposed amendments to Title 17 of the Municipal Code Regarding Commercial Cannabis Land Uses and Development Agreements at 3705 Seaport Boulevard. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and members of the council. I have a few slides tonight to help us walk through them. As you, as you stated, there are multiple ordinances before you tonight, and so we'd like to walk through each one of them with you for your consideration. As you stated, tonight, we, we have four ordinances in front of you. The first one is ordinance 17-8. This would make necessary municipal code amendments to zoning related to cannabis uses in the heavy industrial zone. These are in keeping with many of the other projects that have been before, the, that's the Planning Commission recently, and then also from the council over your last couple of meetings. So this one would create a definition for cannabis indoor cultivation facility, and then establish the requirements for such facilities. These would be very similar to what the council has previously considered in related to manufacturing uses and distribution uses. And that would also add that into our land use matrix as a conditional use in the heavy industrial zone, along with distribution and cannabis manufacturing, which have been previously defined in our municipal code through previous council action. And so our, our recommendation on this item would be to approve the ordinance 17-8. As related to this, we have an applicant, the 3705 Seaport Boulevard LLC, also going as Truth Enterprises. They are proposing to actually then operate a cannabis-related business at 3705 Seaport that would include these three components, the indoor commercial cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution. So in keeping with previous council direction and what's, what has been put into the municipal code, where they're seeking approval of a development agreement for each of these, each of these uses independently. We're bringing them together tonight to, to you as a package, as we did to the Planning Commission, but these are three separate development agreements, although very similar, and hence we have three implementing ordinances before you, that would be ordinance 17, 9, 10, and 11. These development agreements are similar to what other projects have done and what we've brought previously to the council. They include the safety and security plan requirements, assignment provisions, as well as the payments to the city based on their gross receipts. So our recommended actions on these, again, would be to approve ordinances 17, 9, 10, and 11. These matters were before the Planning Commission at their meeting, one of their meetings last month. They did recommend approval of the municipal code changes and the development agreements to the council, and they also did approve three separate conditional use permits, which are pending the city council's consideration of the municipal code amendments tonight. So those have all been approved and are waiting now for final city council action. And so with that, I'll close my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Right, are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? All right, thank you, David. All right, so we're going to open the public hearing on item 11. We don't have any written requests to speak, but because it's a public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Sing none, close the public hearing, return it to the council for any further questions or discussion. No? Are you sure? There's a lot here, obviously, but this is not the first time, this isn't our first rodeo on this, on this topic. So we've taken, taken up similar development agreements and projects over the last, over the last year, and the work on the ordinances and the, the municipal code changes are also intended to, to normalize, is probably not the right word in this case, but to, to regularize the process of accomplishing this. So although there's a lot here, this is not the council's first impression of the, of the overall topic. Ms. Roscoe?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the development agreement, and specifically item F, the public benefits, and it reads, "Development of the project will result in significant public benefits as more fully described here and after, including, without limitation, number one, the provision of opportunities for employment, two, implementation of crime prevention through environmental design, development principles during the operation and maintenance of the property, and three, the furtherance of the economic development goals and objectives of the city." I appreciate those being pointed out. However, I did want to underscore my concern for also, and this might just be my colleagues on the council as we move forward with projects such as these, my concern being the public health, public safety, and investment in early childhood education and prevention when it comes to educating the public about the benefits or costs related to marijuana use. I mean, I think that with the legalization of marijuana, many folks may begin to not appreciate that there are risks that are involved with use or overuse, or even, I've seen some pretty creative edibles that I thought looked fantastic, but if they look fantastic to me, they might look fantastic to a child if you leave them out. And I want to make sure our public is fully aware, and I would like to see West Sacramento be a leader in that effort, so that way we are protecting all 55,000 citizens in our community, and not just at a baseline that every city is, is doing, but rather taking charge and making sure that everybody has more information, so that way our, it takes a strain off of our officers, it takes a strain off of our teachers, it takes strains off of, I mean, I want to partner with all of these parties, so that way we ensure that our community is protected.
All right, Councilmember Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think as, as my colleagues know, the concern for me with these projects has to do with security and safety, and I, I feel like we have set the track record, we've, we've, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this isn't the first time we've gone through this, so I really, I feel like that that's been adequately addressed, and I'm comfortable moving forward. But when, when one of these first came to us, the very first one, that was a huge concern to me, but I think now we have some experience, and so that's clearly, clearly delineated in the, in the DA's, and I feel comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think this was, this was a pretty typical West Sacramento approach, which was, we don't know, we don't know, this is a whole new area, let, but let's give it a try, and we'll figure it out as we go along with the first few, and rather than, let's do a two-year study and try to figure out everything that could possibly happen, figure out the perfect policy in the absence of any experience whatsoever. And that's what we did. So the, the council has, has been metering out, you know, one, one or two at a time to see, okay, we think this will work if we have these standards and these security requirements, but let's test it out. And as we've, as we and the operators have, or not, have learned, we've been able to put the policies, give them, give them more, more permanence in this kind of, this kind of an approach. So I think it's a, it's a good example of how to, how to deal with things that, that present some uncertainty, but, but a range of uncertainty that we can, that we can deal with. And, but through these development agreements, we're also able to accomplish, you know, some of the public investments in exactly the sorts of things that Councilmembers Roscoe is describing, as well as to support the, the, you know, the, the baseline and the supplemental security services of our, of our own police department, as well as the underlying work that happens in community development and public works and many of the other element, parts of the organization that are essential to, to, to providing that, that safety. And so the, in the absence of the development agreements, we wouldn't have the, the revenues in order to accomplish, accomplish that. So I'm supportive of it as well. Any other comments?
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I'm supportive of, of this for all the reasons you've outlined, and Councilmember Sandin, we were, we've sort of, the city kind of took this on and, and learned, and as we went and were able to address issues, we have, it took me a double take, a little bit to understand why we needed three DA's, but it makes sense, given the legal ramifications of any future ruling that may occur out of this, and so we can unwind one piece at a time if, if need be. So I thought that was actually very creative by staff way to address it. But I also think, I kind of heard Councilmember Roscoe your, your points, and it is worthy for us to kind of, how we can further that notion. This is the evolution of marijuana, cannabis into the lexicon of local government as a standard plays, continuing to play out, right, one chapter after another, and started with medical marijuana and how we dealt with that, and then how we dealt with sort of, I don't want to call it the normalization, but certainly the state's legalization and how we deal with it now through ordinance. But there is a component you bring up that I think is worthwhile around how we can advocate to the state or others who are now made this the part of the, or framework, how we can advocate to them, right, we want to be a leader in that area, and it's, it's worthwhile. So it is probably something, you know, not through this direct action. So, it is probably something, you know, not through this direct action, but we can further on, because I think ultimately, just as ABC regulates and manages and health codes go out on alcohol, about warnings signed at storefronts, I'm not sure if any of those such regulations kind of come up on cannabis. And granted, this isn't a retail operation, but it does, will lend itself out to it. So, I had not thought about, maybe that's the chapter that's yet to come, but because it's coming, landing in our community, it's landing on us, and we're the first to feel it, and somebody has to raise their hand about it. So, I applaud you for kind of bringing up that notion and something as we look forward in terms of what policy issues lie ahead, that might be one of them. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think on this issue, I think that just to reinforce that the city, if we approve these actions tonight, the city's support for moving forward with a range of cannabis-related manufacturing, production, research, and other light industrial enterprises, which are consistent with the city's overall economic structure, is not, shouldn't be in any way taken as a signal about our approach with respect to enforcement on use, in the same way that we do with alcohol, right? We love being a home of a lot of craft breweries, but that's never interpreted by our police department as saying, well, it's okay to drive drunk or to walk around inebriated in public. And, you know, so I know that our officers will not get, take that message from these actions tonight either, and neither will anyone else in the community, and there's been four times in the last two months when I've left this building, and the folks have been smoking marijuana in public places, on the sidewalk or in the parking lots, and issues around edibles, and we will have all of those to deal with, and we can, just as we have been both a center of alcohol production but still insistent on all the safety concerns around the usage and education side that Councilmember Roscoe has articulated. So, we just, but we actually have to remind ourselves that we're insisting on doing that. This is not a signal that we are, that this is a lax environment around those rules and around education. So, all right, is there no further discussion? Mr. Ledesma?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and taken by Ms. Roscoe. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries, and the second readings and adoptions of the ordinances are tentatively scheduled for October fourth. Brings us to item twelve, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinances seventeen dash fourteen and seventeen dash fifteen regarding proposed amendments to Title Seventeen and Title Fifteen of the West Sacramento Municipal Code Regarding Electrified Fencing. Ms. Allen.
Chris, I do have one slide for the commission. So, this item is a request for amendments to Title Seventeen, the zoning ordinance, and Title Fifteen, which is the building ordinance regarding changes regarding electrified fencing. In 2013, as part of the Planning Department's Annual Zoning Review, section seventeen point thirty-one was added to the zoning ordinance, and that had to do with various kinds of prohibited fencing. And electrified fencing was one of those areas that was called out. It is a prohibited use except in the M one, two, and three zones, which are shown as the blue areas on the map. It is a conditional use in the BP zone, which is the red areas, and it is permitted for animal control for a large livestock in the A one zone, the rural residential zone, and the rural estate zones. The representatives from Electric Guard Dog approached the city regarding a zoning ordinance change to allow the electric fencing in the limited industrial zone like it is in the other M zones. They do have a customer at the far end of West Capitol Avenue that is requesting use of electrified fencing, and so that is how this application came to be. Staff does acknowledge that we are in the early stages of our zoning ordinance modernization, which follows the general plan update. However, this change is relatively minor, and also, we will, just wanted to point out to the council, we will look at fencing as a whole again as part of the zoning modernization. The other aspect of this that we're bringing forward to you has to do with changes to the building section, Title Fifteen. That was actually not part of the application from Electric Guard Dog, but was a request from the fire department to bring forward at the same time as part of the evaluation of the application. They realized that we were also talking about electric fencing, and they, earlier this year, as a request from the Parks and Rec Department, they were asked to provide a code interpretation for use of a type of electric fencing to contain the goats that the city uses to mow the weeds in the springtime. And so, they asked if, since we were dealing with electric fencing, if we could bring the, this together at the same time, just for expediency's sake. The Planning Commission heard this item last month. Staff's recommendation was to add the use, as a permitted use, in the ML zone with a five-hundred-foot buffer between residential and commercial uses. The Planning Commission discussed the item at length. Their ultimate recommendation was to make it, recommend it as a conditional use in the ML zones, similar to it is in the BP zone. They also recommended the changes to the section for the goat fencing. That concludes my presentation. There is a representative from Electric Guard Dog here who I believe has a short presentation for you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do, but I'll wait till after public comment. All right, thank you.
So, Kathy, can you say again why this has leapfrogged the zoning modernization? We get requests for a variety of zoning changes all the time from companies and residents and ourselves, and why does one move to the front of the line?
It was a relatively minor change, and we felt that the change was very similar to the three M uses where it is allowed currently, and so that's why we proceeded with it.
Okay, and for the portable livestock fencing, is it, is any kind of electric fence allowed under these?
It's my understanding-
How, since the goats, as an example, are a worldwide attraction for children and others who normally wouldn't want around an electric fence. So, are there, is there, are there different rules for this, or how highly charged can an electric fence be and still be permitted?
I'm not sure the actual voltage. It is a system where you definitely would feel it if you touch it. There is a double set of fencing. There's going to be a more robust fencing at the front, in front of the fencing that is electrified, and that is intended as a safeguard so that children won't be touching the live wire.
But that's not in the, that's not in the ordinance, right? That's, that, you're, the double level of fencing is simply something that this particular operator is going to be doing based on their approval from the fire department, or, and how would we know in the future, in the future, that we would not be electrifying children?
Brian Johnson is curious. Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We made a code interpretation as the existing ordinance for electric fence that wasn't practical for the use at the time, so we take, using that as the base, and there was a reasonable amount of safety created in this ordinance, that's why it's allowed. We use that for the basis to allow the goats. So, what we did was we added a non-electrified fence within thirty-six inches of that, which is similar to what a permanent fence is, except the distance isn't so far. Obviously, the height wouldn't be practical, so we went with forty inches, and also required that it be, if the fence was going to be electrified, that it be under attendance twenty-four hours or while it's operated.
But these are, that's the specific case of the permit for the fencing for the goats?
Yes, for a temporary livestock fence.
For any temporary livestock, because I'm trying to get at the, I get that we figured it out because we're so heavily involved in the goats project ourselves, but the language of the ordinance doesn't have any of that in it. I mean, it's just portable livestock fencing. It's subject to your review.
Correct. That's in the language, but those rules are in that fifteen, what's fifteen? I don't have that for-.
Yeah, it is in section fifteen eleven, one-ten B, which says, "For portable livestock fencing, a non-electric perimeter fence, forty inches in height, shall be separated from the electric fence by a distance not less than thirty-six inches from the electric fence."
Oh, it's on that, okay. God, it's on that page.
Thank you.
All right. I read too far ahead.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I do.
Ms. Roscoe?
Mr. Johnson, just with respect to fifteen eleven, one forty, the signage, and I see that there's going to be signs that say, "Do not pet the livestock," but I'm wondering if the "do not pet the livestock" have some type of relationship to the electrified fence? Is that just because we don't want them fed, or because we don't want them to get-
Well, we don't want an adult or a child reaching in over electrified fence and getting electrified, so it was just an additional precautionary method just to keep people from being electrified.
I'm just wondering if the attractive nuisance we're trying to avoid shouldn't be, like, more specifically, for example, if my children saw a sign that said, don't, that, you know, feed their livestock, my youngest son will feed the livestock because that's what he does. But if the sign said, "Warning, child might get electrocuted," then we're staying away. And I just wanted to see if, whether or not it should be more, you know, the threat that we're trying to avoid should be a little bit more specific.
I think it's a-
I believe there is a requirement that there be a sign that says, "Warning, electric fence."
So, in addition to?
In addition to the "don't pet the livestock."
Do not feed the electric fence.
Do not feed the electric fence.
Thank you, that's all.
Any other questions at this time?
I'll wait.
You still good, Mr. Ledesma? Okay. All right, then we'll open the public hearing on item twelve. We know, again, we have no request to speak, but this is a public hearing, so does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Ms. Bryan.
Mayor Comalden, members of the council, Brian Cooley with Cooley and Associates, representing Electric Guard Dog Security. I just want to briefly just maybe separate the items for a little bit, and there was a lot of discussion over the goat fence and over our security fence, and they're two different items, two different kinds of fencing. I think the first question the mayor had was what enabled our text amendment to kind of jump ahead of the line over the broader comprehensive zoning update. As was mentioned in the staff report, we do have a client that's requesting the use of the fence on West Capitol Boulevard. It's TEC of California, they're a, they produce tractor trailers that are environmentally sensitive, they haul semiconductors and other IT equipment, so it's environmentally sensitive tractor trailers, and they wanted to protect that. They, I incidentally want to report, they employ, their company, ninety percent of their employees are West Sacramento residents here in the city, and so they requested the use of the fence, and it turned out that the fences were prohibited in the light industrial, or the limited industrial, the ML. Just for a little background, if you recall, three years ago, you approved the use of electric security fences in the M one and the M two, which the light and heavy industrial, and also the M three and the waterfront industrial, but we didn't go as far to utilize them in the limited industrial. And so, our request was to allow for that expansion of the use of fence, as you saw on the slide. It's a small portion of the city, a lot of it is adjacent to the rest of the industrial uses here in West Sacramento. I think some of the confusion that occurred at Planning Commission last month was, there was some misunderstanding between the operations of our fence and the goat fence, which is limited seasonal in operation, and so the commission attempted to regulate that by applying the conditional use permit provision that you use on the business professions on the BP to our limited industrial expansion of the use of electric security fences. We think that's a little bit overkill. It is, it is allowed by right in the M one and the M two and the M three. We think that expanding it to the limited industrial makes a lot of sense, given the limited zoning areas ML within the city. But I think the confusion going back and forth of the commission and trying to understand the height and the signage and the goat fencing and the livestock fencing, and trying to apply that standard to our security fencing, enabled them to take them down that conditional use permit path. And I wanted to say that we do have a perimeter fence around our fencing, so there is a full-length perimeter fence that basically prevents a bystander or a child from touching the security fence. It is labeled every thirty feet about, you know, warning, "Don't touch the fence" in various different languages. Here in West Sacramento, you also require screening on the fence, on the perimeter fence, whether it be chingleed fence or a black wrought iron fence, in some cases, they are behind masonry walls. So, your average pedestrian or child that's walking along the fence can't just touch the fence and be shocked. And primarily, the fence is more of an alarm system than a security fence. It's a pulsing current, and so if the pulse is interrupted for a split second, an alarm goes off, which triggers the owner of the fence and PD, and we can respond to that. So, I do have Cindy Williams here from the company that can answer any specific technical questions about the fence you may have.
Good, because your time is up.
I'll clarify. Perfect time.
Thanks, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for your, the opportunity to speak to you again tonight about this. My name is Cindy Williams, I am with Electric Guard Dog Business Development Director. We applaud you opening the amendment back up for consideration in the rest of the industrial districts. We do have a little concern about the requirement that came out of the Planning Commission that was not an original recommendation from staff to have a CUP. We feel that staff's analysis that concluded that this ML zone shares many similarities with the other M zones, and it does not constitute an inconsistency, that we feel it should be treated with the same as the other industrial zones and not require a conditional use permit. If you, under, if you remember when you first passed the code, there are a lot of safety precautions that go along with this fence that make it extremely safe for innocent passersby, and the only people that really come in contact with this fence are those that are trespassing illegally. There's the mesh fence, there's the perimeter non-electrified fence, there's the warning signs. As far as aesthetics go, with all of these perimeter fences and the meshing and all of that, if you recall, our fence is, or the electric fence behind it is simply twenty strands, single strands of wire. So, it is much more aesthetically pleasing than something like barbed wire, razor wire, which really sticks out at you. If you're driving down the street and you don't know this fence is there, you don't know this fence is there. You really don't see it. The way you recognize it is if you get up close to it and you see the warning signs. But as far as the actual fence, if you rode down the street, if you didn't know what the warning signs looked for, looked like, you would not know that there was an electric fence there until you got up close to it with the intent of trying to trespass. So, we just ask that you consider dropping the CUP requirement and treating this ML zone just like you treat the rest of the industrial zones. One issue with, is this is a security system. When somebody's breaking into your house or into your property, you need it resolved tomorrow, you don't need it resolved six months from now, and attaching a CUP process to approval typically can add that amount of time. And if a business is being broken into and their livelihood is at stake, they need something more quick, quicker than what a conditional use permit will allow. So, we just request that you treat this zone just as you have the other industrial zones in your ordinance and not require the conditional use permit, and remove the confusion that was probably brought up when we kind of confused it with adding the livestock and the differences in safety and the differences in operation between the livestock fence and the security system. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
I brought in Johansson.
Maybe if you could just explain basically the technical differences between the livestock fence and the security fence.
Well, I'm not in the livestock fence business, so I'm not sure, and I didn't grow up on a farm, but I can tell you what our fence does. It's battery-powered. It's battery powered, it does not plug, so that means it does not plug into your grid. It's 12-volt battery powered, that's it. It is pulsed, very, very short, very, very safe. There's a solid, not a solid, but a perimeter, it's completely surrounded by a non-electrified fence, so the public is not exposed to it unless they're trespassing. That non-electrified fence in the city of West Sacramento is required to be meshed, so there's another, an additional separation. Plus, it also hides the fence, so as far as aesthetics go, it still, it drops the view of the fence from the public. There's warning signs, it is on an alarm system so that if somebody does break that current, it does call out, just like your ADT or your home security systems would. It places a call to the business and says, "Somebody's breaching your perimeter." So it has, it also follows the standards for electric security fences. There is a standard out there, and it is built and installed at less than half of the allowable properties that are allowed in the standard. So it is well below what we could put it, you know, what you could install it at.
I guess my question is more, it's not, the point of it is not really to, for a lethal electrical dose.
If the point of it was for that, you'd have to get something different, because it does not produce that.
Right.
It cannot.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, then we'll close the public hearing and turn to the council for further questions or discussion. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. Thank you. I guess my question for staff is around, because I was confused as well around that we had two issues here, kind of the goat fences or the ag fences and the perimeter fences, the security fences that they just spoke of. And we're trying to wrap this all into one sort of package to get through. So when we went to Planning Commission, it was recommended that it was, that it was not a conditional use permit, correct? The staff recommendation was that the security fences we're talking about for the limited ML zone was, would be not a conditional use permit, right?
That's correct. Staff's recommendation was that it be a permitted use with a 500-foot buffer zone between residential uses and certain commercial uses.
And I talked to staff earlier today, get some questions on this around the nature of the fencing. The way it's described to me is that there's always a masonry or some other fencing around it, and it's meant to be, not disguised, but meshed.
Yes.
Yeah, so you can't really penetrate it without jumping a fence or getting over a fence, and you won't really get to it, correct?
It's my understanding it's a fence within a fence. There is the mesh fence on the outside, and then a certain distance inside that is where the actual electric fencing is.
And we require that just by, that's required as, for installation period, correct? Thank you. So I'm trying to understand where, why the BP zone was brought in. Was it, I mean, I'm not saying if we were going to recommend for a conditional use permit for this today, it sounds like it's regulated today to be, and we allow it today. Do we have, we have some today that are out there, correct, in Southport?
Yes, there's a handful of them in, I believe, the M1 zone already.
Right. And I understand that, I'm just trying to understand that, like, from the ag use perspective, was, that is not conditional use, or is it, on the other zones that you talked about?
No, this, the changes to Title 15 were solely for mobile fencing-
Okay.
-that applies to the goats. The ag zones where it is allowed, that's totally considered for like small farming purposes that are in a static location where the fencing for the goats moves from place to place as they graze in different areas.
I'm just trying to understand where the condition, because now you're recommending the conditional use permit on it, and I'm not-
The Planning Commission-
The Planning Commission did, are you recommending it, staff?
Staff's recommendation is to, we're affirming what the Planning Commission recommended. How they got there during their discussion was, they felt like the ML zone was, although it is an industrial zone, it's kind of a transitional zone, it's kind of a tweener between commercial and industrial, and because of that, they weren't really comfortable just having it as a permitted use. They wanted the chance for additional oversight on a case-by-case basis to make sure that it was appropriate in the locations where it could possibly go.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now.
Okay. Zarosko?
So, the way I understand it, it was not initially staff's recommendation that there be a conditional use permit with the, within the ML zone, but only after the Planning Commission decided to add it. Now, staff supporting the Planning Commission recommendation?
Yes.
And that's just for additional oversight? If it weren't there, I mean, essentially, I mean, based on the presentation, it didn't sound like the electrified fence would be visible through the outer fence or pose any public security or danger to the community. I mean, is there, is there a particular reason why that particular ML zone would be different than the areas that we don't require the conditional use permit?
Not particularly. Staff, if it would be your purview to go back to staff's recommendation, we would obviously be fine in supporting that as well, since it was our original recommendation.
Okay, Ms. Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Allen, do you mind if we go back to that slide? I'm just trying to-
Certainly.
I think the visual helps me. So, just so that, if I can paraphrase, so I understand this. Right now, today, in the blue area, you can go in and have, you could get a fence?
Yes, it's a permitted use in the blue zone.
Permitted use, right. In the red area, it's, it's conditional use, right now.
Yes.
So we're looking at today, with regard to this, it's the little bits of yellow.
Yes.
Okay, and that's coming forward to us to decide, the recommended from Planning Commission, place I served for almost a decade, the Planning Commission, there, that suggestion is that we go conditional use, or another, another option was to put a 500-foot buffer. So that, yeah, I'm trying to get in the heads of my, you know, being former Planning Commissioners, that that could be something like, well, if it's 500 feet, maybe some places will want it to be closer, so if it's, it's better if it's a conditional use, because we might be able to get it closer or not to 500 feet, depending on what's on the edges. So the problem we're trying to solve is to actually allow someone, and make a determination of someone in the yellow place could ask to have a fence. Is that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because to me, because right now you can't. So right now, if a business wanted to be protected, would have to find something in the blue or possibly the red, and the decision before us, coming before us, would be, or you could, if you were in the yellow, you could ask. That's kind of, it seems to me that's kind of where we are today.
Yeah, in the yellow zone currently, it's a prohibited use.
Right.
And that's how this came about.
Right, right, right. So I heard the concern about the length of time, but if we didn't take action, it wouldn't be allowed. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand all that.
That's, that's correct. If no action was taken, it would still be considered a non-permitted use and not allowed in any of the areas where it's colored yellow on the map.
And then I additionally heard that there'll be more, like a larger look at all of the zoning, this kind of issue, and that's coming forward, and that could be revisited along the way.
Yes, we're, as you're well aware, we're just starting the zoning ordinance modernization. We actually have a meeting with those contractors tomorrow, and we're holistically looking at the whole zoning ordinance, nothing's off the table, so we will be revisiting fencing as a portion of that, so.
Okay, okay, thanks. I just wanted a little more clarification on, on the total picture for me. Thanks.
Thank you, that was super helpful. Mayor Portem, Johansson? Yep. Mr. City Attorney.
I'm speaking more tonight than I've spoken in weeks, years. There is one clarification, I think the staff report is correct, but the ordinance that's attached inadvertently continued to include the sentence about a 500-foot buffer. The Planning Commission's action actually struck that sentence. So if you look at the ordinance itself in 1731-010B, as approved, as recommended by the Planning Commission, that last sentence that says electrified fencing shall be prohibited, et cetera, that sentence should be struck. And so what the Planning Commission did was replace that 500, that fixed 500-foot buffer with a conditional use permit to allow some discretion on the Planning Commission's part.
Where's the struck-in language?
In Attachment 1.
Yes.
Section 1731-010B, the last, the second to the last sentence in that paragraph says, "A conditional use permit is required for uses in the BP and ML zone," but it goes on to say, "Electrified fencing shall be prohibited within 500 feet of all residential zones and commercial zones unless separated by a freeway or railroad crossing." That sentence should be struck.
So, so back to, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Back to Councilmember Sandin's point, the issue is, in the BP zone, it's not, not permitted today, prohibited.
In the BP zone, it is conditionally permitted.
I'm sorry, I'm, ML zone, I'm sorry.
Correct. In the ML zone, it is not permitted today.
And, so the staff report originally, since I'm trying to get at, so if, the original staff report did allow it, to allow it to be permitted in the ML zone, am I right?
In the ML zone.
Yes, the ML zone.
In the ML zone, was it permitted with a 500-foot buffer? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that was the original staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And then so, and then what's now being proposed is conditional use permit with no buffer?
Exactly.
Thank you.
No buffer required. The conditional use permit could itself require a buffer.
Yes, that could be a condition that the Planning Commission imposed.
Mayor Portem, Johansson?
Yeah, could you maybe put the slide back up on there? So I'm, I think I'm, I would support staff's original recommendation on this. I'm looking at the ML zoning here, and it's either, either sandwiched between two industrial uses or between highways, which I seem, I think were a concern to Planning Commission, or they were using those as buffers as between residential. So there's really only, it looks like maybe two small areas in the Broderick area, is that right? That potentially ML, that are still sandwiched between, those must be on Triangle, is that where those are?
Yes.
Yeah. So it seems like it's industrial all around there, and I understand the Planning Commission's interest in transition, but it appears that transition has happened here, at least on these MLs. So I don't really see much of a justification for treating that any different, which is staff's original recommendation.
The only area where the ML actually does kind of butt up against residential is the piece that's kind of in the middle of the screen, to the right side of Interstate 80 there, there's the-
Between Kickin' Mule and the Meadowdale neighborhood.
Yes. That's the, that's really the only area where it actually encounters the residential zone, and it does have commercial on the other side. But you were, you were correct, in pretty much all the other areas, it's with pretty like-minded zoning.
And if, I read that right, if it went through with staff's recommendation, and that's the piece of property that I'm eyeing, there would still be a 500-foot buffer from, to the west of that neighborhood, correct? They would have to, they would have to have a 500-foot buffer? If it was a permitted use-
That, that is how staff recommended it was with the buffer zone. I'm sure it's within your council, if, within your purview, if you, if you like the permitted use but don't like the buffer, that we can work with that as well, obviously.
Well, yeah, my point is, is, my point on more stands is that the ordinance is still require perimeter fencing, and to go outside of it for, I think, safety reasons, and they still require mesh, meshing or screening-
Yes.
-to hide any visual impediment or issue that I, that I would worry about in a residential area. And with the original recommendation of a 500-foot buffer, it sets it back, it sets it back away, you can't, you know, it can't be too close to the residential, which we would worry about.
And, and we added that particular provision at the request of the fire marshal and the building official. They, they wanted that buffer between, especially between the residential as an extra safety measure.
So, so not a measure of safety for people, but for the potential of a structure fire, or?
No, I think they were talking safety for, for people.
I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with this concept, because people don't spend all of their lives in their residences, right? So the, I mean, the, when, the foot traffic on West Capital Avenue and the bicycle traffic and the areas where we've had, let's say pedestrians not in full command of their, of their, of their best senses, have been on exactly this stretch.
Sure.
And we've, and we've said, you know, how do we, how do we create more infrastructure so that they don't wander into the street? But could wander, if we're, if there is a concern about electrified fencing to a level that we don't simply make it a permitted use everywhere in the entire city, right? So, because if it is that it's totally safe, it's behind some other mesh fencing, if we had the same rules and they applied everywhere in the whole city, because there's no, there's no danger, there's no reason to discriminate between the zones. If there's no public nuisance or threat or danger at all, there's no reason to ban it in any zone. But if there is one, then it's not clear to me why, why a walking corridor along West Capital Avenue near, near fast food places and shopping and whatever is a, is a better place to have a potential hazard than in a, in a residential neighborhood where the residents will, over time, know pretty well that it's there, which may not be the case with itinerant visitors to, to the Harbor West Center or to, or folks just going down, up and down West Capital Avenue. So what's the rationale for the residential focus?
The idea, as Kathy mentioned, was to add additional layer of safety, as Ms. Zarosko mentioned with her child being curious, is just, it is an attractive nuisance, and if we're going to put it adjacent to a residential neighborhood, we just wanted to limit the exposure.
But, but, so why would you even have it on, on a heavily traveled public arterial street?
Well, I think the thought going into it when we first approved it, that the installations were in industrial areas away from the community, there wasn't a lot of traffic, and that we're moving it into areas where it was, was just, again, just to create that buffer. Maybe it was oversight or not part, not to consider walk paths.
Yeah, because, so if you, if you're a child in the Meadowdale neighborhood and you want to go get a taco, this is, this is your walking route to go, to go do that, it's only two blocks away. So I just, it's, I mean, it's not, it's not an objection to the ordinance, it's just, it's like, what is our, what is our basic belief here? It is a hazard, and therefore people need to be protected wherever they are, you know, wherever people congregate or where children are or whatever. Or it's not a hazard, you're not worried about it because it's meshed- not worried about it because it's mesh and it's behind dual fencing and all that, in which case, we're overprotecting. At this stage, we ought to allow, we ought to allow more places. It's, I'm just trying to understand the logic of that, of this, of this distinction, that's all. On the goats, can I ask a goat question?
Sure.
So, I know, I know why we've picked three languages, but I want to give an example of why we should be thinking more, since we're a small city, we don't have to only look at big averages. The, the, the primary users of the river for fishing are not, are Asian-American residents of our community who speak Vietnamese, Mong, Laotian, not Russian, and, and also to a lesser extent than you would expect, Spanish. And so, the use of the census data to say, these are the top three languages, English, Spanish, and Russian in the community, are likely to, to not capture the, the, the safety of the folks who are the most likely to be, be using, this is not to the fire marshal in particular, but just to the, to the language of the ordinance, presumes that the average is what matters, and it's, it's, this is a very place-based set of, set of warnings. So, I'm wondering if there's a, if there's a way that we, we can account for where the location of the, of, of, you know, the, of the fencing is, rather than simply declare based on the census data or what have you, that, that these are the, that these are the three lang, well, English always should be one of them, but, but that these are the other two languages following that.
We could certainly look into that.
But we're, but we're voting on it tonight, this would be, would be in the code, in the municipal code, the municipal code itself would specifically say, these are the three languages. In the absence of any sort of, I mean, it could be, I suppose, the, the fire marshal has to approve, oh, I'm sorry, only next, only next to residential areas. So the portable livestock fencing is a, would become a permitted, other than next to a residential area, would become a permitted use, subject only to the requirements that are specified here, correct?
Yes.
So there's no, there's no place, there's no stop in the process to, for, for the city to say, okay, for this, for this geography where this fencing is going, this is the appropriate warning language?
Okay, well, we could certainly add those other languages in there, it, so that it's more clear for the people who might actually be encountering that area that the fence is live, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that's the best, I don't, I don't want to, I mean, the other way to have kids not pay attention to the signage is to have it be in 27 languages, so, so that may not be the best way to solve the, to solve the problem. And I don't, maybe we can't invent it right at the moment, but I would, I, I would hope we can search for a way to, where we can tailor, tailor the, the, our linguistic strategy more appropriately to the, to the users of the space.
A lightning rod.
Yeah, it's just a, yeah.
A lightning bolt.
Icon, right, yeah.
I just want to-
Mayor Protem?
I think, you know, I'm just doing a Google search for international sign for electric fence. I mean, you can do this as pictures as well, so you can get away from the languages completely. There are some that are pretty convincing, hand being electrocuted, things like that, that, that you can kind of maybe stay away from the language itself.
Well, in this case, you need, you need the, you need the international icon for do not feed the animal, animals, but maybe there's such a thing, so.
I'll be the first with a do not feed the goats.
Other questions or discussion? I took us on the goat, back on the goat tangent, but without needing to cut off discussion about the, the, the larger issue.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I guess, your point about that corridor, it is, it is a good point around, around how that, and maybe this is what the commission was thinking about, is how areas like that, that are kind of sandwiched along the corridor, how they could have a fence or use a fence, and, but, I don't want to say, but, I, I think it's just a function of, though I looked at the map, it seemed primarily blue and red all around, and, and that's an area where we thought it, that the way we wrote the ordinance, or there's fencing for whatever reason it is, it would be safe and visually set back. That, in those areas, it, you know, it, it would still be, we've regulated it to, to where it is still in industrial areas, and it still follows the rules of how it's built to keep people at bay. The 500-foot buffer is the issue I think you're concerned about because it does connotate the need for some sort of, why are we, why do we even need that if it's next to residential? And maybe just to make us feel better a little bit about potential, you know, young, young kids being curious? I, I don't have a rationale for that, I, I'm not married to it one way or the other. I'm conscious more of frankly, not electric fencing, since it's behind the wall, it's just more of the, it's cinder block fencing or whatever that creates feeling of a prison next to a residential area, that, if that's what's necessary. I'd be more worried about that than the actual fencing itself. The electric part of the fencing, next to a neighborhood, because no one wants to live next to highly fortress, industrial use. So I would think about it that way, in terms of why the 500-foot buffer. But again, I'm, I'm not one way or the other, I'm just under the impression that for one reason or another, we tend to be good with electric fencing in, in the city, and especially in those areas of manufacturing and, and M zones. And we have, you know, taken precautions to the rest of ordinances, how they're built, how they're screened, and it just seems like the conditional use permit kind of came up, and I don't, again, I wasn't up by any commission, I don't know how that got brought up or what the rationale was behind it. But if we're good with it there, and we're, I don't know what more we could regulate at a conditional use level, if it's, if we're telling them how to build it, they have their, what it's built behind, and the voltage around it, sign is necessary, other than to say yes or no. So if it's a prolonged no, whether you get a conditional use permit, that's, if we don't want it there, we don't want it there. If we want it there, I know, that's just my sense of it.
I think one advantage of conditional use in the, in ML, I mean, I, I don't have a strong opinion about this, 'cause I, I feel logically conflicted about which, you know, which is the correct, correct regulatory regime here. But that particular part of West Capitol, I would hope, in reviewing a conditional use permit application, staff would examine that question, because that is, we don't, we actually don't allow, the commercial portion of West Capitol Avenue, we don't have any of the blue zone, right? It goes just, it goes close to, but doesn't hit this, it doesn't get to West Capitol directly, it only gets to West Capitol in the, in the clearly industrial zone. This section right here, just because of the legacy of bad planning and infrastructure changes and whatever, is, it is, it is, has industrial uses, but it is across, it's across the street and immediately adjacent to regular retail commercial and a residential neighborhood. It's the only, it's the only section of the street that is that. So it, so yeah, a block away, it's, it's blue again because it's fully industrial. But that particular area is, is a, is a, is a weird mixed mashup of industrial, residential, and, and, you know, customer-serving, customer-serving retail. So it feels like, in some ways, that's, it's, it's equivalent to, if you were in Southport, it's equivalent to the, the Lowe's center that also has the self-storage location. So the self-storage location, maybe that's appropriate, but, you know, I wouldn't want to see electrified fencing at, you know, at, at Streets of London necessarily. And the conditional use permit would allow you to assess, given, given that the, that the underlying environment is a bit uncertain and ambiguous and mixed, okay, what's the right thing in this moment? And I feel like that neighborhood, which is so little, nobody even, nobody, people always talk about Broderick, right, Southport and Old Westec, they don't even know that, that Meadowdale exists. They should have some, somebody should be looking out.
No, I, your point is taken. Is there any other ordinances along that, because it's really the frontage, right? That, that, you know, is there any other rules that govern that kind of stretch, I mean, that would impact the fencing along that, that stretch? Because it is along that corridor, and so the other areas, but is there any other ordinances or setback rules around fencing on, on?
On that stretch of West Capitol?
Yeah.
Not that I'm familiar with. I don't think that there are any specific fencing regulations along there.
One option that the council could consider would be to make it permitted within the ML zone, but have a geographic carve-out, that within a particular geographic area that's zoned ML, a use permit would be required, or a 500-foot buffer would apply in this particular area. If you're comfortable that there's a discrete portion of ML zone property that is really unique, we could, you could work that into the ordinance.
Mayor Protem Johannesen?
I, I think that might work, but I, just getting back to the question of the danger. I don't know, we have the project or the technology owner here. Is this really an issue? Do we really have, I know it's an attractive nuisance, but, you know, you have places in cities that have power substations in the middle of residential neighborhoods that are far more lethal than this, and I, it, it could happen, but is it really, I mean, is it that big of an issue? And maybe it's a fire chief, a fire issue. I, I know you like buffers wherever possible, but, you know, to basis on an occurrence that may be very, very, very infrequent, it may happen, but I'm not sure about regulation on that basis without-
When we discussed it at the planning commission, the applicants did mention that the, the voltage for their system, I believe that's the correct term, is actually pretty low, that, that, yes, it obviously will act as a, as a deterrent, but it's, you know, not life-threatening or anything by any means at the way it's deployed.
Right, but that's their system, but you could have another system that comes in that's different, right? Are they all going to be that, the level of lethality would be the same as this particular technology, based on the ordinances presented?
Well, the way the ordinance was, was written was to assure that there was a reasonable amount of safety, and the International Electrical Technical Commission provides a standard and guidance to assure that it is reasonable, as well as there's a California Civil Code that, that references that as well. Again, this was just an additional layer to address a potential attractive nuisance for children who would be, be curious.
Okay.
As I was one time, as a child.
All right, thank you.
So, so I'm sorry, Brian, just, just to be clear, we have this proposal, and it's a, whatever, 12-volt battery-operated electricity, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. If there was another company that wanted to come in, would they be allowed to use more voltage?
No, the standard is, is pretty straightforward on, on the limit of what they can do. It may be different than what Electric Guard Dog may have, but it wouldn't allow any more that would be unsafe.
12 volts, 12 volts is the absolute limit.
The 12-volt system, there's, it is prohibited to plug into a wall, it has to be a 12-volt battery system.
But what about with livestock? That was, could be higher voltage?
No, it'd follow the same standard.
Have standards been recently employed, or created with respect to livestock?
I don't know as far as specificity versus livestock versus a security fence, but the standard is pretty generic as far as the energizer and what, what it can do and how much the, the output, energy output is.
Okay. As a child, I was like my son, and put my hand right on an electric wire and did a little dance for a while, and it was an explosive experience, and one that I would never subject any child to. So I'm under the impression that what we're talking about here with Electric Guard Dog is not something that would be as powerful, but rather maybe a shock that would deter somebody or get their attention and alert an alarm system so that help can be called?
You're talking with regard to the security system?
Yeah, what we're talking about with-
Correct, it's, the way I understand, I'm not an electrician or engineer, but the standard provides the, the safety measures for it, but that it, it gives you a shock just enough to say, hey, go somewhere else, the way I understand it.
Okay, okay.
So, I don't, I don't, Ms. Sandin, do you have a, you, you helped immensely with the, with the, walking us through the map, do you have, happen to have the whole answer?
Well, I, I mean, we're either, we're either disregarding the planning commission's, like, suggestion to us, and possibly simplifying the code, going back to the staff's, I mean, that seems to be the two decision points. Do we, do we go back to staff's original suggestion to planning commissions that went forward, or do we, say, embrace the planning commission's suggestion about this being a conditional, conditioned use? That's how, I mean, those are the two positions.
Or our city attorney's recommendation, or suggestion that we could also do a geographical carve-out?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the third. It seems like that's, that may be the biggest concern, is that, that one area in West Capitol, and that's the area that I think would have the buffer, it's the only one that's near the 500 feet. So if that was a carve-out, that might solve that issue. That would, I, again, I didn't, I, unfortunately didn't watch the planning commission discussion, but I, you know, having, again, having spent almost a decade on the planning commission, you know, you kind of wanted to have your, your thoughts be taken seriously and your consideration deliberations, but if that, that may not have been an option, and that may have solved that concern. So, I think the, the city attorney's suggestion might, might be a direction. I would feel comfortable, I think, going in.
Yeah, I would too. I mean, I think, I, I mean, the fourth option is the one that the Mayor Protem Johannesen has hinted at, which is, okay, could we just remove this as a thing altogether? And fortunately, we have the whole zoning modernization-
Right.
...effort underway anyway, so I, maybe if we, if we move forward with the essence of what the city attorney outlined, and then ask staff to, to examine this, this, this more fundamental question about, okay, is this, with this 12-volt technology and everything else, is it really, is it really necessary for us to have all, you know, this robust of a regime anyway? But we would have, we would take this step forward and then come back to that issue, because I agree, it's, it's, it's a key one, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Did you change your mind?
No. My question for you is whether you want to continue this and have us bring back specific language, or do you want us to do a little editing on the fly and do it now? Up to you. We can, we can come up with some language tonight, it might be better if we have a chance to think about how to word the geographic exception, so that it captures the area that we're concerned with, and doesn't over or under include-
And so, just to, just for clarity purposes, so in, under the, under the Mitchell alternative, the, the, in the ML zone, other than the geographic carve-out, it would be a permitted use?
It would be a permitted use, and we would strike out the language about the 500-foot-
And the 500-foot buffer, and within the carve-out, it would be-
A conditionally permitted use.
Okay. So, my personal, is this, is the carve-out area where electric dog, not electric dog, it's not, it's not affected by, like, electric garden is not in the car rider? Okay, so there wouldn't be, there, there wouldn't slow them down twice to have it come back and then have to apply for a CUP?
I think that's right.
Okay, all right. What's your pleasure?
I'll move that recommended action.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to continue it?
Continue this item to October 18th. October 4th, sorry, October 4th. We would continue this matter to October 4th.
Do we need to, I mean, what?
Or we, or we could, we, or we could temporarily pass over the item, allow staff to work on-
Yeah, thank you.
-some language this evening and come back.
It seems, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
If we could do that, we'll continue.
Okay, so we will, we will continue consideration of this item till later in this meeting, and proceed in the interim to item 13, while staff works on the language for item 12. Item 13 is consideration of City of West Sacramento Resolution 17-57 and West Sacramento Financing Authority Resolution 17-58 authorizing the issuance of Water Revenue Bonds Series 2017 and Wastewater Revenue Bonds Series 2017, authorizing the execution and delivery of related documents and approving other related actions. Mr. Blumberg?
So, this issue had been before you before as an information item, and so what we're coming to you tonight with is authorization to issue water revenue bonds that would result in $15 million worth of construction proceeds for projects, and $9 million in wastewater revenue bonds for, for projects. I can certainly revisit any issues about the financial analysis, but I was just going to simply talk a little bit about the structure. It's similar to what we did in 2012 and 2013, where we, when we refunded water bonds back then, we, we engaged the- then, we engaged the West Sacramento Financing Authority, and so they're actually, you know, the council is the authority, will be issuing the bonds. And then the key document between the city and the authority is the installment purchase contract. And so basically, the city acquires the public improvements from the authority and makes installment payments to the authority. And so that's kind of a key document. There are a bunch of documents there, most of them, I think, are typical to our other financings, but the installment purchase contract is a little different. If, if the council directs us to proceed today, we would first get a rating from Standard and Pors. The water enterprises already rated A-plus, so we would, we imagine at least we'd have an A-plus rating or better. Many of the council's actions back in June created standards that Standard Pors is looking at, so I think that we'll do quite well on the rating. The wastewater enterprise fund isn't currently rated, so that would be a new rating for, for that, for that fund. Should we then proceed, we would have a, a pricing of the bonds in late October and then we would close first week in November and we would have the proceeds at that time. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions? So just in the staff report, you've given us the $208,000 cost in terms of the difference in the debt service, so just want, I want, I'd like to ask you to reconfirm what you said at the last meeting, which was that you are, this, this $200,000 difference is not going to result in a staff recommendation to increase rates in order to accomplish this?
That's, that's correct, Mayor. For the, for the wastewater fund, even with the additional 208,000, or they're around because it varies every year, our coverages are, are very good and, and that addition would not create the need to have a rate increase in subsequent years beyond 1718.
Any further discussion? And then is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Ms. Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 14 is a workshop on amending the book of fees for various regulatory activities, products, and services. Mr. Sharma.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Natish Sharma with the City Finance Division. Today we are presenting the proposed amendments to the book of fees and to seek council direction and feedback. Fees total about 42 million or 32% of total operating revenues of 130 million. A number of city services are almost entirely dependent on fee revenues to operate and provide day-to-day services. For example, the community development department, public works engineering, and hazmat fund. A small contribution is made from the general fund to these funds to offset the costs that are not recovered by the fee revenues. Regular updates to these fees are necessary to ensure that expenses match with the revenues and limit the contribution from the general fund. This year, the city completed a comprehensive review of all fee schedules. There are 40 fee schedules in your packet with proposed amendments. The fee amendments in most schedules are due to three primary reasons. Firstly, these fees have not been updated for a number of years and therefore the revenues are not, not matching the expenses. Secondly, the fees charged to, charged do not include unanticipated major increases in the benefit cost, the purse increases, workers comp, et cetera. Thirdly, the proper allocation of cost between user groups, including minor changes to ensure fee schedules are easy to understand. There are also few policy issues in the proposed amendments for council direction or feedback. For example, the first one is the transaction fees. This staff is proposing to pass the cost of merchant services related to customers paying bill using credit card or debit card. Just, the city in the past has been absorbing these fees and in fiscal year 1617, the city absorbed a total of $84,853 in merchant fees. Second policy issue is related to the change in allocation of construction permit submittal fees from 45% upfront to 65%. This will help the city to continue review and approve plans in a timely manner and reduce the amount of accounts receivable and delinquencies. Third policy issue is to charge a higher amount of fees to non-residents for parks and recreation programs and also to provide priority registrations to residents. This will ensure residents are provided with a lower cost and have access to programs and services before non-residents. Staff presented the proposed amendments to the West Sacramento Chamber Government Affairs Committee two weeks ago. There are no significant direction from the chamber board other than the fact that business communities are in similar position as the city and adjusting revenue recovery based on cost of providing services. Staff will be presenting this proposed fee amendment to the Economic Development and Advisory Commission next week, and the comments will be incorporated in the final report. This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any question or any feedback council may have.
Ms. Sandin?
Thank you so much. I, I, as I was reading through the, all the pages, I noticed, I noticed at the high level, the, the transaction fees for credit cards is a kind of overarching issue, but it's, I just noticed it was found, it looked like, it looked like this is going department by department, which I understand that's how it would be written. It doesn't show up on all of the pages, so are some departments absorbing the 3% and then some want to charge it? It just seems like consistency to me would be...
Absolutely. So the final packet that will come, it will only be listed under transaction fees, not in each schedule.
Okay. Because it was in some, but not, okay, okay.
So only, only funds that will absorb the fees are the utility funds, the water, sewer, and refuse funds. And the way they are absorbing these fees is the rate, non-rate and fee revenues, like interest earnings, are offsetting those costs.
Okay.
Council has the, can provide the direction that those fees can be passed to, but staff's proposal is to be part of their cost of doing business.
And then, second question. I noticed that in the facility rental area that there was, instead of charging kind of a flat cleaning fee, now it'll be, it'll be completely charged back to the user, but will the person renting a facility get some sense of what it, kind of a, it could be from $80 to $3,000 or, you know, will they know it's, so they can kind of plan for their event?
Absolutely. It will be based on the application permit, the size of the event, and, and it'll be determined based on the, we will have that, we'll provide that, but we may add something in the fee schedule if the council would like.
Well, I don't know that needs to be, I just, it just, as a, as someone wanting to do an event, it, you know, you have the, how much it costs per hour, how much is staffing and, and so forth, and then that one's just kind of open and you will be charged whatever it costs to clean and it just, just even, yeah.
Pass-through.
Yeah, but I think some kind of parameter for a user, kind of typically it is around this or something. But I understand, I understand that because you could have a huge event, and I actually have been to, I've been to the Riverwalk after an event that was, did not leave the park in a very good condition. It was very expensive to clean that up versus an event where the, the user cleans up everything and leaves it better, like a Girl Scout leaves it better than you found it, you know, so I do think that that's reasonable and we should, we should be charging what it costs. So, okay.
Ms. Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I, I understand that we do need to update the rates to reflect the true costs and things that are more current, cost of the city. I, I did, in looking through this, had a couple comments and, or concerns, rather. The first had to do with the security alarm fees. Somebody who believes in, and many of us, I'm sure, you know, security systems for their home, I mean, I live in an older home and there are many people in our community who, you know, they have alarm systems, but, you know, have, have situations where maybe if their home is not, well, let me, let me backtrack. My concern here is that we might have folks out there who are elderly, disabled, or have children who trip a system, or maybe have an alarm system that, or a company that's not as responsive to its clients. For example, you say that an alarm goes off, you get a phone call from a 1-800 number, they say, hey, your alarm has gone off, we just won't let you know, give us a call back at 1-800 XYZ. The, the person calls back, but by then the police are at your door. And my concern is, I don't, I don't want to have a perverse effect of having our citizens be dissuaded by worrying about the second false alarm fee that they're going to be responsible for now. I, I really liked having a situation where you, you, okay, third time is, is when you really get your punishment because you're a repeat offender at that point, but, but providing a buffer for, for folks who, you know, maybe it's accidental or because of other circumstances. So I, I appreciate the, the fact that we're lowering the third alarm fee, but I disagree with the second alarm fee. I think that, that might be a little harsh for, for folks, given they only have one previously tripped alarm. Well, if it were somebody or, you know, obviously this is, you know, just, my concern is for the folks that, that can't pay for that. The other comment I had was with respect to early childhood education and the learning ladder, and I, you know, have been aware as a learning ladder parent that fees are going up, and I really do appreciate having the sliding scale for families with moderate to low income. This is a fantastic facility that has very high-quality educational services that I want to make sure are available to everybody who is, who would like to access them regardless of resources, so I do appreciate their. However, with respect to late fee, and it might be an oversight or an error, but it does read, if payment is not received by the second of the month, and if, if I'm, I may be mistaken, but I think it should read the 10th of the month unless that, it should be consistent with the, and Ms. Tuttle, correct me if I'm wrong, it just, you get a $30 late fee if, if it's the, the second of the month. I mean, some people don't get paid and have their direct deposit by that time and, and I just don't, I would rather have the buffer for folks who get their payment in as soon as they can.
We can make that change.
This is not my favorite report of yours, Natish, because it's not going to win the GFOA award, and I'll tell you why. Because the, the actual fees are not in the staff, are not in the staff report, so you have to keep flipping back and forth, or the, the discussion of them and the, the background and the comparison to other jurisdictions is in the green report, but then you have to keep finding the actual, so it says the change is, is, you know, is, is for this reason, but it doesn't say what the change is, so it's a bit, it's a bit confusing to kind of just put it together. Okay, what are we, what's actually happening here? Having said that, like everyone else, I don't like any of these fees for all the reasons that have been said and another hundred of them in terms of the, of the implications they have for the business climate, for equity, for a whole bunch of stuff. We have a fiscal, you know, we have a fiscal crisis in this city and most cities in California, and we have no choice. And if we're going to be able to continue to have people show up at the door when your alarm goes off, we have, we're going to have to charge for more of this. If we're going to be able to retain that police officer that's coming to your door when the alarm comes and not leave them to Vacaville or to Folsom because we can't afford to pay any longer, we're going to have to do a lot, make a lot of hard choices on the financing side. This is what Mr. Kristof used to describe as feeding the monkey, although monkeys are way more fun than, than, than the book of fees, but we just don't have, I mean, we have choices on each of the individual ones for sure, but in the end, it's got to add up to the, you know, to the, to whatever the number, the $32 million that it, that is required for us to be able to pay our bills as an organization. And so I'm, I mean, I'm supportive of, you know, taking a look at, at all of these issues, but we, they have to be within the context of how do we make sure that we're covering our costs because it cannot, because we have to be able to provide those services. And the general taxpayer of the community, mostly, most of whom are not wealthy individuals either, cannot be expected to subsidize all these other activities for everyone else, right? This, it's just, they cannot. Whether it's, whether it's for a learning ladder parent or for a developer coming across the table wanting to get a plan check. In either case, the, the, the general taxpayers of the city, it is not their, it is not their job to be subsidizing that through the, through the fee schedule. So it is key that the, the fee schedule capture the actual costs so that the general fund, the basic property taxes and sales taxes that people are paying in this community to, to support the essential public services of the community are protected. So I think you, yeah, I would definitely quibble about some of these too, and I, and I might in a minute, but I do, but I think overall, I mean, you've taken a pretty aggressive stance here, but that's exactly what is required, given the, the state of what the, of the, of the fiscal situation as a result of the CalPERS changes and everything else that has put the city in a, in a, in a position where we've got to, got to find every possible quarter in the couch in order to, to make this happen. And our citizens know that and they, and they, they demand, they, they still expect that we're going to respond to the fire call. They're still, they still expect that we empty the trash can at the, at the park and that we do all the basic services they demand. And the only way that will happen is that folks who are using, who are using specific services as customers of the city, which is what mostly the book of fees covers, are fully covering the costs of, of the services that they're getting. Mayor Protem Johansson?
Yeah, I think I agree with you, Mayor. The, I think, you know, most of the comments we receive on fees are usually from developers or people doing business in the, in the city, and I think, you know, most of the comments I've heard from that group is really, these fees should cover costs and no more. They shouldn't be profit centers in and of itself, so it's a question of transparency. So, and I'm glad that's the way we're approaching this. And the other issue is, I think the mayor brought out in terms of the analysis of this, how you're presenting these to us, because it is based on cost, and we have, for example, a plan check fee is X, in this jurisdiction, it's 50%, in another jurisdiction, then we need to see at some point analyze why that's different. Why is ours that much more expensive? And there could be some efficiency differences, you know, possibly you're subsidizing the other jurisdiction, we don't know. But at least it gives us kind of a, you know, where we sit in the community, sit in the region, and it at least brings up the question, why are these different?
Further discussion? It's just a workshop tonight, so there's no further discussion, and just thank you. Oh, Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo, you know, in going through it, just not to pile on, but it, it would be helpful to sort of have it organized with the fee schedules with rationale below it because it is, I'm working off an iPad, so just flipping back and forth, I can't put a finger on where that section is and go back and forth. So, and not to make you do more work on the next, when we see this. And generally, you know, this is always the discussion we go through the book of fees every year, is that there's increases and there's costs, and, and the mayor reminds us of the fiscal responsibilities we have, and it is true because we all fill these. Personally, I'm, not to counter Ms. Roscoe, but as somebody who paid the $200 fine on the third return trip to the security alarm, thanks to my wife, no, not to throw her under the bus, but that, that did cost our police force to come out and visit us, and it, it reminded me, us, it did its job. Set the alarm, undo the alarm, don't set it off accidentally, and, and we have gotten better. And that's, that's sort of what it does because it does, we forget that it is, it caused them to come out and, and be at our place. So, but, but I think generally, in looking at some of them, they do provide, it seemed that we've got really granular on some of these fees in terms of structure and really granular on special events, on how we categorize them by size and, and, and when they turn them in, which I thought was creative, but addressed a real thing in our, in our, we have to, and I think I may have brought one of these and said, hey, an event's coming, it's, you know, 45 days out from the event. Didn't help that it was a big festival on the riverfront, but, but it caused everybody to move really quickly and, which expends more time over a shorter period of time. So it is, it was a relevant ways to look at the impact of those visits and those, when, when we were asked as a city to provide a service. So, you know, conceptually, I agree with it, kind of that, that approach, that it does categorize and hopefully get people to kind of come in... to kind of come in and think, first time somebody does it, it's like me on the security side, all right? This first time you do it, you'll say, Kate, next time, get it in early, it's cheaper, and you'll have better service, and it'll go better. So, anyway, those are my comments.
All right, do you have sufficient, sufficient direction for the next item? All right. Okay, thanks. All right, item 15, then, is consideration of approval of plans and specifications in contract awarded to Taker Construction for the Washington District Sustainable Community Infrastructure Project.
Mr. K.
And Mr. Mayor, just at whatever time you'd like to go back to the electric fence ordinance? We are ready.
Okay. I know for Mr. K., this is the part of his job he hates the most, so if we could get him out of here, because he can't stand being in front of us, that would be the best, probably best. And then we'll come back to item, to the original item and take that one up. All right?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Council. The Grand Gateway Washington Infrastructure Project is a top priority item in the city's strategic plan. Typically awarded construction contracts are council consent items. For this project, the cost came in significantly higher than expected. Staff attributes this to the complexity of the project in an infill historic neighborhood, you know, with aging utilities and the current construction climate. I have a few slides to summarize the project's scope and help provide some insight into the current construction market. Next slide, The project's scope includes surface streetscape improvements in the Washington District, specifically enhancement of the East Street and F Street corridors leading to the riverfront through the widening of sidewalks, adding bike lanes, adding street lighting, and adding a street tree canopy. This involves working with and coordinating with individual property owners to reclaim the right-of-way. The other major component of this project is to create a grand gateway by extending 7th Street from West Capitol to Tower Bridge Gateway. Next slide, please. The Grand Gateway is aptly named, is where the historic Washington District meets the bridge district and the central business district are downtown. Great Grandway, Grand Gateway furnished improvements on West Capitol Avenue and Tower Bridge Gateway will add a street car stop and a signalized crossing for better transit and pedestrian access. Having all sides of the Grand Gateway furnished improvements completed makes the parcel much more developable from an economic standpoint. Next slide. The underground utility portion of the project includes approximately 3,200 lft of storm drain, 5,500 lft of sewer mains, which includes a jack and bore under the Union Pacific Railroad, as well as a 3,200 lft of water mains. Next slide, please. Now, in analyzing the current construction climate, when staff first opened bid on June 29th, we could not attribute the substantially higher unit prices to just our site conditions, which are indeed difficult. For example, the sewer work, you know, requires sewage diversion during construction, as well as de-watering and shoring. Contractors generally prefer greenfield development projects where they can get much better efficiency and production rates. That's considered, you know, easier money. This table provides an example of similar projects in the, in the region with similar bid opening dates. The R Street project is a streetscape project. The Elk Grove and Roseville projects are comparable utility projects. The Roseville project, in fact, did not receive any bids despite extensive outreach, you know, from their engineering department to contractors. Lastly, you know, last slide, please, Chris, and if you can leave that up, that'd be great. Lastly, due to the high bid prices received, staff initially considered recommending a rebid of the project. However, construction demand is not expected to, you know, to decline anytime soon. In fact, the R Street project was re-advertised, and the low bid actually ended up being $200,000 higher. Furthermore, the project has grant delivery, has a grant delivery deadline of December 2018. Although staff has been working with a grantor to extend the date, we have not yet received formal time extension. That concludes my presentation, and staff is requesting that council consider the recommended action following any questions you may have.
All right, are there questions for staff? Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. So you're recommending approval of the contract. Well, first, let me start. Thank you for the update, and, you know, this is a project we've all been looking forward for some time, getting, especially with the Washington neighborhood, and it's taken off over on Third and C, as well as us acquiring land on the Grand Gateway, and the Gateway West project being up and running, it becomes increasingly more important. A higher price tag, though, is not, I think, wasn't wholly unexpected, given the construction climate we've been hearing about. But I'm just curious, funding, you, in your staff report, you mentioned the additional costs would come from, or the additional, what, 45% over what we budgeted would come from other sewer water projects that may be forfeited? Is that a true statement? And possibly Measure G funds? Is that the source of funding for this?
I'm going to ask for some help from our economic development director.
Thank you. I'm just, and Aaron, you know where I'm headed. This is like, yeah, yeah, and it's just, it comes at the cost, yeah, where it comes at the cost of something.
Sure. So there, you know, I've spent a lot of years doing affordable housing projects, and I am starting to think this project looks like the sources and uses from one of those, because we have now, I think, eight different sources working towards this. But to get to your question, the extra funding is coming from a series of extra funds, the main ones being the sewer bonds that you just approved, the bond issuance for. We did a workshop previously to explain that, so there's about 4.1 million there. There is an additional now recommended from Measure G of about 2.8 million. We have previously authorized a million in the current year CIP, plus another one and a half million from previous CIPs. And we do want to acknowledge that. It's a significant increase to the amount of Measure G commitment to this project, but at the same time, given the options we had, we both think it's the most appropriate source. This project really exemplifies what Measure G and the Community Investment Fund's all about, because of the return on investment we expect from this neighborhood. But definitely, that's a, that's a number that we were, we went through the same process of kind of the sticker shock on the increase, and did our best to come up with sources that we felt were most appropriate, and those are the two main ones that were identified. There are some smaller sources as well, but Measure G was the main contributor.
Yes. Do we know how that, what that might impact?
On other projects.
Yes, other projects that might be impacted by this?
Yeah, so fortunately, Measure G did have capacity to absorb that extra amount. We don't have a lot of room. In fact, in Attachment 3 of your report, I included a chart that you're probably familiar with from previous workshops, to demonstrate that with this extra funding from Measure G, we don't have to defer any other projects that were in the CIP currently, but do want to acknowledge we don't have a lot of room going forward. We are working on some grant approaches for some of the other projects, like the C Street Bridge, that could free up additional capacity, but as of right now, what you're looking at on this chart, and we do have conservative revenue estimates here, but what you're looking on the chart is what we foresee, at least for the next couple of years, as being our Measure G CIP. Not a lot of room to add projects.
I have no further questions at this time, Joe.
Mayor Protem Johansson.
Thank you, Aaron, as long as you're both up here. So this is going to be a major installation of infrastructure in an older part of town. One of the things we're looking at is data communications and how we, you know, continue to wire up the city. And these older parts of town are particularly problematic because of their existing infrastructure. So at this point, is there any plan to lay fiber in these trenches as you're working through this? And if not, are there possibly funds to help us do that?
Yes, in the new streets, in the newer portion, the 7th Street extension, we are including conduits, extra conduits for, you know, for future telecom capacity. Unfortunately, we looked at undergrounding the dry utilities in the older Washington District, and given the budget, we just could not afford that. And, you know, and the type of work we're doing, it was not continuous work, where we were trenching through entire streets where it was easy to add conduits.
Is it all pretty much piecemeal, then, or patchwork within the district?
Yes, as far as the utility work, it was, one of the reasons the prices came in high was that in 2014, when we did the CCT being of the sewer and we evaluated the condition, we're only replacing what's, what's really in really, really bad condition. So it would not, with the price tag that, you know, we're spending, that would not cover the entire Washington District.
So the recommendation is to include alternate 1, and maybe you can go into a little bit more detail about if we're already way over budget on this project, why we're adding an optional component to it.
Sure. Bit alternate 1 is for the parking lot across from West Gateway Place. We, that parking lot is needed to accommodate the second phase of that. Now, staff in analyzing the bid, the bid that was submitted, the alternates actually came in relatively, you know, reasonable. So looking at the cost to build that parking, parking lot for less than half a million dollars, we thought it made sense. Plus, that was coming from a different revenue source that was set aside for parking. That's why we recommended that. Now, as far as the second bit alternate, which was for the finance improvement on G Street adjacent to the Welcome Grove Development, we have, have not completed right-of-way acquisition, and there's some uncertainty with that, so therefore, we're not recommending that.
So this parking lot is necessary for West Gateway Place 2?
That's certainly a consideration. West Gateway Place 2 is part of what the parking lot could be used for, but it's also for Grand Gateway. It's a, it's a surface parking lot that could accelerate higher density development on the Grand Gateway sites that are, that are going to be vacant, ready for development. It's, to Vin's point, this was a funding source that is only available for parking. In this case, it's Ziggurat parking revenue that we receive. It could be used for other parking facilities, sure, but on this one, this is one that with the streetcar coming in, we feel like it's a good opportunity to both, like Vin said, get it at a reasonable price, but also create a parking asset that could be actually revenue-producing with or without development when the streetcar line comes in, but also to support the future development of both West Gateway Place 2 and the Grand Gateway properties.
And the Ziggurat parking fund is, it's a restricted fund?
Actually, it isn't a restricted fund. It's not restricted to just parking. It could be used for general revenue, but in the case of what we've been doing recently with it, we have been trying to direct that funding towards parking costs, but you're right, it's not a restricted fund.
And what's its, what's, what's its balance relative to the, not to the penny, but relative to this amount of money?
You got me there. See if our finance director knows that.
At $600,000 at the moment. We, general fund received that money prior to year budget, but general fund didn't need it, so we council direction was to put it back in the Ziggurat Parking Fund, so.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll move it on.
Okay. Moved by Mayor Protem Johansson and seconded by Ms. Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We're going to return now to item 12 on electrified fencing. And Mr. City Attorney, do you?
Thank you. So here is the language that we think captures what we discussed. In the draft ordinance, so Attachment 1, Section 1731.010B, we would revise B to read, electrified fencing is prohibited unless used in the ML, M1, M2, and M3 zones, or used in the A1, RRA, and RE zones for animal control. So in that sentence, we're just inserting ML before M1. And in the next sentence, it would read, a conditional use permit is required for use in the BP zone and in the ML zone for property located east of Interstate 80. And then we would strike the third sentence, which was the electrified fencing shall be prohibited within 500 feet. And the community development staff is comfortable that the reference to property located east of Interstate 80 would only capture the ML property that we were talking about.
Okay. And it doesn't capture electric?
Does not capture the property that is the subject of the application, as I'm understanding it.
Okay.
Do you want to put the slide back up?
All right, are there any questions about the, for the city attorney? That makes sense to me. Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Move the recommended action with the revised language from council. I'm sorry, let me take that back. We're going to, the motion is to, I'm going to need some help here, council. It's to remove the conditional use permit and revert back to staff's recommendation on availability ML zones?
Actually, I think your first motion was fine. The recommended action with the revision to Section 1731.010 has stated by-
Has stated by council?
City Attorney.
Okay.
And including direction to staff to, as part of the overall zoning modernization, to consider the issues, the issue with respect to the level of regulation needed on this topic generally.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Ms. Sandin. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to item 16, which is request for consideration of a universal policy document to guide Measure E expenditures. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. The purpose of my report is to request council consideration of a policy document that would guide the expenditure of Measure E funds. I'd like to start with a brief background and then provide an overview of the proposed policy before I turn it back over to the mayor to lead the council's discussion. Measure E is a sales tax measure that was approved by West Sacramento voters in November of 2016. The ballot language that the voters approved included a description of the proposed uses that Measure E funds could be put to, which included repairing roads, building and maintaining bicycle and pedestrian trails, reducing homelessness and its community impacts, improving educational and career opportunities for youth, and enhancing internet access and the use of smart technologies. At the council's meeting of June 28, the council directed that before allocating Measure E funds to specific projects, it wanted to create a policy framework to guide those expenditure decisions. At that time, the council also identified three distinct categories of Measure E funds, those being capital accelerator projects, programmatic projects, and venture projects. And there's the possibility that the council brought up that there will be specific policy guidance needed for those, for those specific areas. So the universal, in our universal policy, is to denote that these would be policies that would be applicable to all of those categories. On this, August 16, the council conducted a workshop on a proposed Measure E policy framework that was based on an aggregation of council direction that you'd given at the different previous meetings that had covered Measure E. meetings that had covered Measure E. And based on the council's feedback from that meeting, staff has now assembled the concepts that were discussed in the workshop into the draft policy that's attached to your staff report. So I'll provide just a brief overview of that and then open it up for questions in your discussion. So conceptually, one of the important underpinnings of this, of this policy is that, you know, it's our understanding that the council wants Measure E to be outcome-driven as opposed to output-driven, so really focusing on the community impacts of the Measure E investments that you make as opposed to the linear footage of things installed, or tonnage, or different measures of what staff mechanically does with the money. So that, that makes Measure E in some ways more analogous to a foundation grant or a grant program than a typical, you know, city funding source. A second concept that's in the policy document is the notion of budget discipline, which here means the notion that the council has expressed a desire potentially to not spend Measure E funds in a given category in a certain year if it thinks that's advantageous to build up an amount for a larger project in another year, or to keep itself prepared to deal with an anticipated opportunity that might come up in another year. So the utilization of the funds in a given year might not be as important a priority as making sure that the council's prepared to deal with contingencies. The policy includes a number of different threshold criteria that would be applied to requests to spend Measure E funds. Those are listed in your report. Obviously, consistency with Measure E. The, those expenditure requests should be supportive of other council policies and priorities. The expenditure of Measure E funds should supplement, but not supplant, other city funds, so these would be in addition to, these would be enhancements to existing city priorities and wouldn't involve displacing funds that the city's already using. The council's been very clear that you want to maximize the amount of leverage that occurs with these funds. So wherever possible, we'd be trying to find grants and other outside funding sources to use along with the Measure E funds. And then there was a considerable discussion about staff costs and how those would be handled. So in the policy, it's noted that billable staff costs would only be paid for Measure E when other viable, when other viable sources are not available. And then moving to the transparency piece, that also gets covered again, and I will note that. In the, in, under transparency, the policy includes a number of different transparency-related items that the council's discussed at previous meetings. So these are things that we would expect to see in staff reports requesting the council's authority to spend Measure E funds. So obviously, a project description, the desired outcome of the project, and that's as distinguished, again, from outputs, a description of how the proposed project would effectuate the desired outcome. So kind of what are the, what's the, what's the connection between the use of the Measure E funds and the actual impact in the community? A projected budget, an explanation of how staff costs will be paid, and that would include a description of the efforts that staff had made to identify alternative funding sources if, in fact, staff costs are proposed to be paid with Measure E funds. And then performance metrics, so in other words, just a metric that would describe how the council and the community would know if the use of Measure E funds was effective in achieving the outcome that was targeted. Then there's a, there's a section in the policy also, in terms of accountability, that calls for annual reporting, so there'd be key performance indicators for the individual projects and for the overall use of the fund that would be reported on annually. And then, in response, again, to council comments, there's a piece in there requiring public acknowledgement of Measure E funds, so to the extent feasible, there'd be a project sign or social media releases, other, the other media platforms to make it clear when the Measure E funds are being used, so the community knows that that was, that that was Measure E that did that. So those are the pieces that are, that are in the policy. There's also in the staff report, we're requesting your approval of, you know, conceptually, staff reports coming after this policy is approved to begin requesting funds from Measure E to be expended in accordance with this policy. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Mr. Ledesma's calling on me?
No, I'm just, you want to?
Well, this builds on the item that we had at council a month or two ago, that was also prepared by Mr. Robinson and the team. And I think this captures very well a lot of the policy streams and criteria that we've been discussing, and trying to achieve the right balance between clarity and the underlying complexity and the variety of objectives and the contours that we're trying to grapple with, but also have a policy that is, reflects what the, what the council has intended when it placed the measure on the ballot. So I'm supportive of moving forward with this. I think it's the right, the right step, and also beginning to allocate some of the funds in some of the programmatic areas. There are two areas I wanted to, I wanted to pull out to talk about a little bit more, and they're, they're the two that we've been, that we've been grappling with the most in terms of how to nail them down. So one is the budget discipline, number seven, and the other is AE, which is staff costs on threshold criteria. So on number seven, I think what you've tried to do here is have an overarching statement that is so general as to not be that helpful, which is that council may, may for strategic reasons not choose, choose not to expend all available Measure E funds in a given period. And yes, that's, that's true, but it doesn't really, it doesn't guide you or us in any meaningful way. And, I mean, I might go so far as to say that we won't budget, in the two-year budget, we will not budget the venture funds. You know, we'll budget the venture fund as the venture fund, but we won't be budgeting two years' worth of projects in a venture fund that is intended to be opportunistic. Whereas for the, you know, some of the programmatic areas that we know, this is what we're going to be doing, we do intend to fully budget those in the two-year process. So that, so we use those categories to distinguish how much, how much we're reserving for opportunities and how much we are, we are, we are budgeting as a firm, as a firm allocation. And maybe those are too stark, but I think, but I'd rather go there than have it be overly general in a way that doesn't provide you or us any guidance. So that's, that's one. It's this question that we've been grappling with, is how do we make, we don't want to end, you know, two years not having spent anything, but we also, the point of several of these funds is to say, oh my, there's this, you know, new technology, there's this new outfit, there's this new nonprofit, there's this new leverage opportunity, and we don't want to have budgeted and spent all of our money for the two-year period and when that happens. Then on the staffing piece, we've also struggled, and this is, you know, been a bit of a tug-of-war on this question, and I think, you know, we're getting there with this language, but I continue to stress that I don't think every single item ought to have an associated staff cost to be funded. You know, we took up the trails issue earlier this evening, you know, with respect to the levy trails. It is a large proportion of Tracy Michael's job to get that trail system built. And every dollar that comes in makes her job easier in some ways. It's also work, for sure, but it's all, but this is, this is the task that she's charged with accomplishing. And if no dollars come in, it's not as though she's, you know, she's had a great year, or she needs, she needs these resources in order to build out that set of projects, in the same way that Mr., you know, that Mr. Laurel has with Economic Development. Every time a new project comes in, it's advancing the work that he is trying to accomplish. It's not that there's zero cost, but it isn't also as though every single thing is like, oh my God, now I have to, now, now more money has to be allocated from the General Fund or from Measure E or from, from source for new staffing. And I don't feel like we've quite captured that here. When we, when we, when we, when we say staff costs, there's, there's a presumption in this that there is such a thing as a new staff cost that needs to be funded, as opposed to, there is a, there is a staff job that is already underway in terms of managing the road rehabilitation program that was an eight million dollar program, now it's an eight point one million dollar program, or, and I don't want to create a presumption that we're then going to allocate out of Measure E additional funds. We might choose to do so, but I think the, it's important, it's important because this has been an area of continuing dissonance, that we, that we get a little bit more clarity here than we need in some of the other areas where there's, where there's tighter alignment. So in this, in this section, I'd like to have some reference to this notion, and we've talked about it in the subcommittee many times, that there are many things where staff costs are increased, and we need to cover them through these funds, and then, but there are others where it is a modestly incremental or not at all an increase in the overall level of workload, because it is the already, we already have that as the, as the, as the paid-for staffing responsibility of a position or positions in city government in order to deliver that out, that, that program or that outcome or that service or that, or that capital project. Okay. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And John, I want to first thank you for the update and the policy document, and I agree with the mayor in terms of, it's been a little bit of a, I know, for you, probably pushing mud uphill to kind of get us where we're, where we feel we needed to be on this and articulate some of the concepts we had. But you got them pretty much there and captured, and I hope the rest of the council sees the work you've done, obviously, and it's, it's been a very tough road, but as you tried to pull from us, so we could articulate the exact policy statements we wanted. So thank you for a good job. I really appreciate the document itself, because you're trying to articulate those principles. I agree with the mayor on budget discipline. The staff costs one, I think the issue was even more clear, because to me, at least, because as we talked about this in subcommittee and talked about it, I talked about individually with staff, yeah, I think we always had the concept, this was Measure E for staff costs was like the last dollar in sort of concept. If we try to use grant money, whatever else, to try, if there, if there had to be, because of accounting rules, you account for public work, staff or whatever, that had to be allocated towards that, we understand that. There needs to be transparency as you come forward, so we understand the cost. But as much as possible, I think we used the example of, I'm sorry, SP1 money coupled with this money, so Denix is in the back room, understands what we're talking about. If we're planning a road rehab and we can leverage SP1 money to cover majority of whatever run, road fund we have left to cover the majority of staff time, and then those, then the E money comes in to bolster and kind of finalize the deal, make it, the outcome much better because of that Measure E money. That's how, I think that's the example we used, where Measure E money comes in and actually provides more, better curbing, striping, whatever we're doing to make the project even better and add value. And I think that's what we were kind of thinking of it as, is that last dollar in. And the transparency piece you articulated is our way of ensuring how much time, as we look at a project, is going to be allocated on that. So it's eyes wide open for us. And some of it will be, and staff needs to be, in my view, staff needs to prepare to do that. If, if the outcomes we're asking for, to me, this is a tremendous opportunity for council and staff to have really robust conversations around what are we looking to fund and the outcomes we want, because if I'm sitting in that chair, and I do on my day job, I'm coming forward with the best possible outcome, the most impactful, the most, and trying to move the project or business forward. And now with the rule stated, I'm gonna, I'm, it's, I see it as an opportunity to move forward. But if there are staff costs, I better make the case. It better have the most outcome, and, and that will be the conversation we have. We may not agree. There's going to be times we won't. But I think the transparency part of that is worthy of discussion, so we, again, because I think, again, the main principles is, to me, start with the premise of last dollar in. And if the outcome is still great and we still have to pay, you know, if that, if that is what your recommendation is, then this gives you the opportunity to bring it, as long as we're aware of it. I think what the mayor may, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, I think he's shying away from using any staff money from that, and I would agree generally in that, but there may be a case where you have to, and to further a certain notion, whether, I don't know, I can't envision what project that would be, in the venture fund or whatever, if it requires a new person to do something. But that's what this policy articulates. You got to show us, and you got to bear it out, and it's got to meet a lot of, for lack of a better term, criteria about how we, how we, how it's going to further the cause, and it's, and it doesn't, it doesn't supplant funding from somewhere else, it's supplement. So that's my view on it. It aligns that framework of the conversation around it. The theory of change, we have down on transparency. I'm going to be honest, it's a little, the statement itself is a little esoteric or abstract, and so I'm trying to understand what you're, what you're getting at. We had talked about in our subcommittee, the concept of impact, the level of impact as a measure of what we're doing. It comes from my own recent experience. It's something to consider. And my notion of that was, you know, what is the current level of service of the current situation? And with this added project or expenditure, what will be the level of impact on a kind of rating system as a result? The outcome, right? What will the outcome be? Whether it's by better service of, better road service for the road rehab project, or better bike trails, furthering the bike trail, measure my, whatever, whatever category you're talking about, that, that, I was after kind of that. So maybe you and I can, I'm trying to understand what you mean by theory of change issue, because I was talking about impact.
Right, yeah, I think, I think maybe it's just a semantic thing. When we were writing this, you know, the, the impact piece kind of, we were thinking was in the policy, it was in the outcomes and the metrics. So, you know, you're looking, you're looking for an outcome, another word for that might be an impact in the, in the community. And then the theory of change, you write that, that got a little obtuse, but the, the concept there is, is to really make the connection between the thing that you're proposing to do and the outcome that you're looking to have. So if, if, I mean, I'd be hard-pressed to think of a good example off the top of my head, but if you're looking for improving the physical fitness of the community as one of your outcomes, then being able to explain how connecting a trail system does that in terms of how many people walk and why they walk and how that's good for their health, making those connections between the projects and the outcomes, so that the council has the ability to, you know, judge transparently whether there's a good likelihood that funding this project will result in the outcome that we're saying that it will.
I understand.
So theory of change, it's not, if you're, in a philanthropic word, it's not, it's not, it's not esoteric at all, and I would actually frame it differently, because the point of the theory of change analysis is to have the impact assessment not just based on your thing, right? So I want money for permanent supportive housing, because permanent supportive housing will reduce the number of homeless individuals on the street by putting them in housing. So that's, that's a typical ask for funding. The theory of change analysis requires you to say, okay, but how, how, what is, essentially, what's the system look like? What are the factors that are, that are affecting that? And in that, in that analysis, you, that's where you see, okay, but the overall number of homelessness, of homeless is dependent both on how many are on the street that exit homelessness, but also how many are outside of the community and enter if the, if that, if that camp space becomes available, right? So the point of the theory of change is actually to, is to contextualize your own, because what, what y'all, what we all tend to do is we have, we have a policy idea or a programmatic thing or a grant thing that we want to do, and we are obsessed with the relationship of that thing to the outcome, without, and ignore the fact that there are 16 other factors that are in play. And the theory of change is not to disable you from moving forward, but to really force you to ask those questions by more or less drawing out a map of what the problem looks like and how your, how the solution or the grant that you're proposing to do fits in the context of those elements. So I hate doing them as a, when I apply for grants, but when I've read for, read grants, they're really, really helpful, both for the evaluator, for us in that, in that sense, but also for whoever's proposing the element. On the staffing piece, you know, we were in the, in the subcommittee meeting, I think we were getting closer to something more, more tangible. And that is, and we were getting there in part by distinguishing between the enterprise function, the staffing, the staff that are in enterprise functions and those that are not. And so, you know, a staff person in community development who's, you know, whose work is billable in a true sense to an external, to an external client or fund or what have you, is one thing, but that, but I'm not harping on Tracy, but since she did the pledge, she's not in that position, right? Her position is not that. And so when we say, okay, we have, we haven't, we've appropriated through the General Fund funding for Tracy Michael to build out the trail system in Southport, more money comes in. We are not going to hire another half of Tracy Michael, right? So we're not going, yes, there's a staff cost for which we already have budgeted resources in order to accomplish that work. And so in that instance, I do not want to see a Measure E allocation that says, and in addition to that, here's, here's another $50,000 for Tracy Michael's position. We've already, we have already paid for that and/or any grants that have come in from the state and the federal governments. And so that, the distinction between, you know, sort of a billable cost on an enterprise basis and those, those things where we're hiring staff in chunks, and if we're not hiring anymore, if we're not actually going to hire more staff or bill against an enterprise fund, then there shouldn't be a charge to Measure E.
We can make that more clear. We're not trying to backtrack on that. That should be more clear in the document.
But I feel like that was a good way to kind of give, give life to the idea here without, without, because, because, I mean, it's not that I don't want to spend anything on staff, that- without, because it's not that I don't want to spend anything on staff, that's not the point. It's, I don't want to, I don't want to just charge Measure E for staffing as opposed, if it's not going to deliver more staffing that we need in order to accomplish the work. Ms. Sandin.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Mr. Robinson, I, this is what we need to move forward and I know the community was really excited when this measure passed and then we were struggling with, when it was coming budget time, that we, we just needed to get this kind of clarified about how we wanted to move forward. So, between the last time this came to us and this time, and thanks to the subcommittee for all your work, Mayor and Councilmember Ledesma for working on this, because I, I think this provides us, notwithstanding some of the additional clarity, this actually gets us going. And it looks like staff's ready to go once we, once we say this is fine and let's go because it looks like we'll even have workshops and funding requests coming to us at our next meeting. So, I'm excited. I know the community's really excited and I think, I think this in general, this is, this is really good guidance. I hope for the staff. This is really, this is really kind of a compact between what we expect and hope and then to get the, so the staff can actually do the great work to make, to make Measure E come alive, the funding kind of resources come alive in the community. So, I'm, I'm really excited and I really appreciate the work because I know, I know some of this is not, is not terribly easy, but we really did need, we needed some more refinement and more focus. And we got, we got this. So, thank you so much.
There's only, I'm sorry, there's only one other issue I want to pull off, which is around leverage targets, if we approach this as. And I really don't have a preference for this. I just want to bring it up because I know we have a couple of council members who have experience managing sort of portfolio grant issues. So, but we had talked about this at some point in subcommittee, having a target around the fund and being able to monitor, manage it or monitor it over a period of time about how much was leverageable, should we have a target? And I'm really not married to one way or the other. I just want to bring it up to council because it was brought up, I think, at the first workshop. We talked about it as a subcommittee. I didn't have an answer for it. I'm not sure what, I think we made it pretty clear, we want to be able to leverage this. It would be really cool to be able to say how much of that we've leveraged in future years. Do we need a target to start as a policy, matter of policy? I don't know.
Yeah, to me, there's, there's two levels of the leverage target use. One is to distinguish between the categories. So, and the ones that are, that are programmatic, that are going to be programmatic, you know, bike trail maintenance, we probably won't be winning a whole lot of awards of grants for, but we need, but we need to do it. And so, setting a leverage target for that would be different than, than maybe sort of the age-friendly pilots or the homelessness venture work or what have you, which should have a pretty high leverage target. So, distinguishing them that way. But then the other use of leverage is the, okay, if we're saying that the dollar targets for each of the categories are upper limits, but the upper limits add up to more than 100% ultimately, then we need some way to say, okay, which ones, at the meta level, among the whole, all the portfolios, where should we be putting our money? In that case, you do, I mean, leverage is definitely a consideration, but it's not the only one that we've, that we've talked about. So, I don't know what, I don't know if setting a target in advance for that, for that makes sense.
I don't.
And this seems like a start at least.
Yes. And I think that, I'm hearing, if I'm hearing Councilmember Sandin right, and I'm feeling the same way, it's, we've chewed on this enough and it's time to, I personally think it's time to put it to work. It's been almost a year since we've, the community had voted on Measure E and we knew some of the money isn't available till April. And we've been going back and forth a little bit. So, I'm comfortable minus, plus or minus some of the changes we talked about, if we can come back with a policy to finalize and even, you know, start to see some projects. And I know I talked to John, you earlier, that your next step on this is operationalize it, right? Is that, that staff is, that, they have requests, they have projects that we can leverage this for and they're going to test, be the four people that have tested this theory right off the bat and, you know, and so are we. We're going to really test ourselves and that's a good thing. And I think we just, we need to, my personal opinion is we need to get moving. We need to get, if we can move this and start seeing some projects and we can refine, learn in the first few months or first year about how it works and I think that would be a good thing.
So, what if we, I know we still have discussion to have as well, but what if we advanced this, the policy as it's written, ask you to, if we adopted it and then asked you to, when you, when you come back with some of the other expenditures, to come back with a revision?
Sure.
At least on those, those two issues. We don't have a two-year budget coming in the next couple of weeks, so I don't feel like it's an emergency, the clarification of the budget discipline piece.
Sure.
But I, but before we get to the two-year budget cycle and the city manager wants to program every penny for the next two years for projects in the first month, I think we ought to get that clarified. And then this staffing question that we were just exploring more, if we could, if we, so if we adopted this tonight and then, you know, within the next couple of meetings or three or four meetings, you brought back a revision, a clarifying revision on those two topics and maybe others as you learn, as you start to process the first round of the dollars, okay, now that, now that we're doing it, there's a couple of other changes that we would make that would allow us to not delay the getting to work piece while the policy is under endless revision. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. President, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the, I agree with the comments on this. I think this, the policy document, it's, you know, to get it instituted and start working on it and, you know, I'm sure that over time we're going to have corrections or modifications to that. So, it's a very good starting point and really what the voters wanted us to do was work on initiatives, which are, there's more of an entrepreneurial feel to this particular Measure E than anything else we've done. It's not like a sewer fund or, you know, Parks Fund or some of the other departments that we have that are, you know, a lot more programmatic. But it has kind of the feel, what it even has language in is some of the venture activities, which aren't typically what cities do. So, you know, I think we're, over time, we're going to need to keep a look at this policy, see if it's working, see if it's maybe too restrictive in some areas, maybe too expansive in others, to kind of see what works and, you know, maybe leveraging or maybe, you know, more to the venture side or more, more to the leveraging side and just see how it works out. But I think it's a very good start and thank you for the subcommittee for putting this together.
Mr. Ledesma?
I will move to approve the Measure E universal policy document in, with, as it is. And we'll, I guess we'll see revisions possibly the next time, right? And then ask staff, recommend staff, move that staff begin bringing forward proposals on Measure E funds.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we're directing them to bring back the revision.
Directing them.
Yeah. I guess we might see them as the same language. Okay. All right. So, that's moved and seconded. No further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Good work. Item 17 is the workshop on the 2017 Mayor's Challenge application. Mr. Robinson?
I like the way you stepped back for a moment and then re-engaged.
You've got to reset, that's right. You report.
You look similar to the last guy.
Okay, the purpose of this report is to provide an update and facilitate a city council discussion about the Mayor's Challenge. I'll again do a little background on the Mayor's Challenge, which you're already familiar with, but for the audience, and then provide you with the update on where we are today. So, the Mayor's Challenge, it's a nationwide composition, competition designed to encourage local jurisdictions to tackle the country's most pressing problems through innovative, transferable, new tools and techniques. The Mayor's Challenge is sponsored by Bloomberg Philanthropies. It's been held previously in 2012 when the city entered and it was centered in the United States. And then they've also held the competition in Europe in 2014 and Latin America in 2016. The city of West Sacramento was invited to participate in the 2017 competition, which is again focusing on the United States. At your meeting of August 16th, staff presented a workshop updating you on its work to date on the Mayor's Challenge. And then as we previously discussed then, or, you know, at that time, we told you the mayor had hosted a leadership shirt on August 8th that brought together executive team members along with chairs and co-chairs of the city's advisory committees to discuss possible focus areas for the Mayor's Challenge. The feedback from that meeting was, you know, largely that the ideas that that group came up with centered largely around Measure E type issues. So, those became kind of the focal point for the public facing survey that we, that we put out online. We got really a lot of, a lot of exposure to that, a lot of views of that. We got 28 submittals and those are, those are attached to your staff report. And then to build on those, the mayor also hosted what was called a changemaker's event at which forward-thinking community members, business people came and brainstormed around potential Mayor's Challenge submittals. And then based on feedback from that event, two areas emerged as potential focal points for the city's application, reducing the impacts of homelessness and improving educational opportunities and workforce development. And those became, well, the homeless piece became the focus of the Mayor's Challenge accelerator workshop, which happened yesterday, which was really interesting. We had a facilitator from Bloomberg come out and lead staff and the mayor and a group of invitees through a whole workshop that was really helpful in terms of both refining some of the ideas that were related to homelessness because they asked us to focus on a specific topic for that one, but also in terms of making it a little more clear, the expectations that Bloomberg has around the kind of methodologies that they're going to want to see undergirding our applications. So, as, as staff, it gave us a little bit of pause because their expectations are high. We actually, they sent us out on a qualitative research project interviewing people on West Capitol Avenue at one point, which was an eye-opener. So, that's, even if nothing else ever happens, that's a technique we might employ again. That was, that was actually really interesting. It's, I'm sure it's something that council members are familiar with in terms of door knocking and whatnot, but it was kind of an eye-opener for staff. So, we worked through that whole event and we came away with some of those learnings about what they expect methodologically and then also actually some substantive refinements to some of the ideas that are still under consideration. So, at this point, while homelessness and education and workforce development have been identified as, you know, really strong potential topic areas, there's still other projects that are under consideration. So, you know, part of the purpose of this meeting would be to facilitate a council discussion around those or other ideas that you think might be interesting as a focal point for the application. And then in terms of next steps, we're anticipating a preliminary decision about the topic of our submittal in the next few days, which would then let us begin to refine that and bring it, bring that idea back to the council at your October 4th meeting for kind of a final send-off. And then we would continue to refine that using some of the things we learned from Bloomberg and targeting the application deadline of October 20th. So, that's the end of my presentation. I give it back to the mayor for the discussion.
Great. Thanks so much, John. Yeah, yesterday's session was six hours? Is that how long we were downstairs?
Longer.
Which was essentially a whole day on building a theory of change. That's pretty much what we were doing, including the interviews. But, yeah, this is the, this is the moment where this process is stopping here at the council because the next time we will have it before us will be, will be, here's the, here's the, here's the proposed submittal or maybe two in choosing, but this is the, this is the moment for council really to engage and say, okay, no, education workforce is the wrong thing altogether and should be just homelessness or you forgot about, you know, the possibilities of bringing a circus to the city is a different innovation or whatever. But this is, this is the time to, to really engage in. I was impressed by the, both the, what we received in the public survey in terms of some, some interesting and creative ideas. And then the changemaker, changemakers group that was convened also came up with and then spent some time really building out some, some, some great ideas too and which will then be informed by the work that was happening yesterday at the accelerator. So, Ms. Sandin?
Yeah, so, I, I too, I think when I was reading through this list, it's, it's exciting to see the community coming forward and trying to offer up ideas and possibilities and solutions. So, I think even though we need to focus on one, this actually informs us in other ways about things that are on community, the community members' minds or things that we might be able to try kind of along the way and perhaps in the future. As I was reading them, and it's interesting because I didn't know what happened yesterday because we weren't, I mean, this is just coming to us now, as I was reading through them, I was trying to gather up some of the themes and the set of, for me, the set of homeless-related solutions and ideas came together as kind of multi-pronged solutions. And then I also was struck by the volunteerism and engagement tools, but again, that may be something that we could work on down the road and perhaps not with this initiative. I think trying to do something creative in this space, I mean, that to me is the biggest, some of, some of these seem like they've been done and that's what I think the angle is here, is how do, how do we innovate and how is there something new that's done in this area? So, and again, for me, also turning the dial and adding more to our kids' home run was just also of interest, interest to me because we're already doing such good work and would an additional, kind of additional funding to come in, in that effort, would that, would that be helpful to us? So, I, it sounds like, I mean, some of the things that popped out to me were also what came forward. I would completely support moving forward without knowing too much more of the detail, but the homeless-related solutions, that was what came on my reading of it to the top for me. So, it sounds like that's what you talked about yesterday for six hours. So, I just love to hear more, if it's possible, a little bit more details, but maybe that's not, we're not ready for that yet.
Well, yesterday, so at the idea accelerator, we did have to pick one, one, one topic, even though we had narrowed, we had narrowed down to two, but even the two we were narrowing for purpose of the idea accelerator. So, volunteerism was, even in the changemaker session, was a, was, looked like a good opportunity. So, I think coming out of the changemakers, maybe they were, they were, I thought we had three topics, maybe four. But for yet, for yesterday, we had to pick one and homelessness seemed the most ripe because it was the most, it was like the most, so many things going on and if you were going to work on theory of change, you were going to really work on, on building out the, the assessment of the, of the problem and then try to identify specific slices or dimensions or moments of intervention in the journey of homelessness or its impacts that you could have an innovative, a bold idea that would have an impact that we hadn't really, we had some submissions, but we didn't have anything in that space yet. And so, that was, so we chose that, that topic to focus on and it was a good one for that, for exactly that reason. And so, the group, which was comprised, yes, the accelerator is comprised mainly of the city's executive team and myself and Chris Warden from Future Ready and Brian Miller from the Community College Foundation and also Future Ready, I think that was in terms of external partners. So, it was a tighter group than we had had previously and broke into, broke into teams to do mostly building out and scoping out the problems or what are the, you know, what is a, what is a, what is a right-sized problem statement, not how do we solve all homelessness with, you know, it's like what can, what can you do in one to three years as part of this challenge that is bold and innovative no one has done and that would, would make a difference? And so, most of the focuses from the, from that table work were on the impact side, on the impacts of, on the impacts of homelessness. And the tables were then asked to, okay, you have your, your basic problem statement, why, you know, what are the causes of that, of that problem? And then underneath each of those causes, what's the why for that cause? And then what's the why for that why? And then what's the why for that why? Trying to really break down the problem in part so that you don't, you don't, you don't get, you don't lock into a solution and not realize that the other, the other causes are so overwhelming that no, even if you fix this one thing, it's not going to make a difference, which is often a problem in, well, everything, but definitely in the public sector. So, we did that focus and then trying to understand the, the journey of the users in that, in that problem. And for, that might be homeless individuals, but just as often, it was, you know, potentially neighbors who might take ownership of cleaning up visual blight. Or it might be owners of vacant or abandoned properties. Or it might be entrepreneurs who aren't locating on abandoned properties. And, you know, what, what is it in the, in their assessment of cheap land and market and everything else that's preventing them from doing that? So, we're trying to assess from a user, from an individual perspective, the different actors in the system that we were scoping out, where we might be able to do some intervention or some innovation that might, might flip the switch on, on that, you know. So, for example, in the group I was in, where are the places where we might, where we might be able to have an effect on attracting, you know, crazy hipster entrepreneurs who want to, who might, who might be willing, might want to like take advantage of a city-owned vacant property or a failing motel and do something different with it? Why? Why, why do they not do that? Let's break down the whys for why they're not choosing to do that now, and see, are there, are there, are there things that we might do that would cause that to, to change? So, we did that. Then, in particular, that's when we did the walkout on the street exercise, and we fanned out to the library, and the community center, and to Carols, and Aaron got in police altercation, and, and, you know, just talking to all sorts of people, all sorts of people out in the, in the community, and, and asking, and mostly for the purpose of practicing how to do qualitative research, but also how to, how to think about the user journeys, and how to draw from, from, from different people, their experiences, their pain points, their aspirations, without asking them their opinions necessarily. So, a lot of what we've talked about previously, in terms of civic engagement, was part of the Bloomberg methodology, and then come back and try to reintegrate that with the problem. Then, after five hours and forty-five minutes, then we had fifteen minutes to do ideation of actual solutions. So, so we spent nearly the entire day on how to scope, properly scope out the problem and the dynamics of it, and essentially no time to work on solutions. So, we did, we did some ideation, and the groups each came up with something, and, and John's table has an idea that's been persistent through this process around SSI, in particular, so it's on, it's on this list, if you, if you see it in one of the, in one of the grids. But honestly, we didn't have a lot of time in that, in that space. So, I couldn't say, I don't think it would be fair to say that yesterday produced the following two or three innovations that would be submittals for Bloomberg, but really were, were, the purpose of yesterday was, was to help us think more crisply about exactly how to frame whatever solutions, whatever innovative solutions we have for any of the topic areas, including homelessness, in a way that would work, but then that would also be competitive in the challenge.
Okay.
So, so I think we're better, if, if, if you all say, hey, we've got the perfect innovative idea, we'll be better at putting it into the challenge than we would have been two days ago. But I don't know that yesterday led us to the, here's, maybe John has a different perspective, but I don't think, I don't know that yesterday led us to, here's the, now we're down to one, one or two really, you know, really strong candidates for the innovative idea.
Okay.
Mayor President Joe Henderson.
Yeah, so I, I thank you for that analysis, and what went on during the, the event. So, when I look at these things, I, I try to see, okay, what is the problem, what is the solution, then what is the pathway to implementation? And can whatever you're doing be implemented within the scope of, and is it actually going to be used? So, so the groups are either going to be the city, or they're going to be the people. And it kind of drew me to this whole volunteer, hooking up volunteer organizations with people who want to volunteer, because the pathway to implementation is fairly straightforward on that. It would be engaging the public on, on if there's an app, you know, some training on the app, maybe some issue of access to mobile devices. It kind of leads into maybe some of the senior isolation that we've had, that we've identified age-friendly, but that seems to me to be a, something that the pathway to implementation would be a lot, a lot simpler. Some of these others were, you know, particularly homeless, kind of these external sources would be the county and funding, and mental health services, and things that we don't necessarily do, and those, you know, could be the barriers, I think the mayor is talking about, in terms of we could do all this other stuff, if we don't deal with the mental health issues, and, you know, then it's, it's, it's going to be an uphill battle at that point. But, I, yeah, I did, I did think the, the homeless issues, they, they came out pretty prevalent in, at least the, the problems. The solutions were, you know, it was a little bit hard to see how they would, you know, how that would actually be implemented, and I'm not sure in the framework of this particular Bloomberg challenge, how that would fit in, but I, I just saw it out of all these, because it kind of tied in both with the, I think, the public survey, and then also the Changemaker. Well, the Changemaker actually also had the transportation app, which I thought was another item that, we're thinking about how to implement that, if you've got basically someone who puts in an app, I want to go to 123 Maple Street, here are all the options available to you, here's how long it'd take. So, how are we going to get that information? You know, the old bus is not online yet in terms of real-time information, with the bus systems are, so you don't know how far the bus is away from there. You know, we're not hooked into Uber or Lyft or anything like that, so we don't have that. So, there's these gaps in data that I can see that we're, we're going to have to get over, if we're going to do some kind of transportation hookup thing. But the volunteer thing is really, I think it's just, it's a question of connecting two items together. And with parameters, I think, that were mentioned here, you know, whether the requirements of volunteer, you know, are you required to stand? Are there English issues or language issues? Do you have transportation? You know, is, do you have a preference of duties within that volunteer activity? So, I could see, really see a possibility of civic engagement of all ages in that, which would kind of hit a lot of buttons on the things we're talking about.
Yeah, I was at the table for the, when they were working on this Volunteer Match One, and there, I think there actually is an app called Volunteer Match, that, that does the basics of this, and, and there's, I think there is a real opportunity here, but it requires a big level up from that, right? So, the, and we know from the age-friendly survey, just as one example, that there's lots of people who, who, who at least say that they want to volunteer, but don't know what's available, and we know there are organizations in the community that, that would love to have volunteers, so there's this, there's this problem. But the, the challenge is both, that there's no, as a, as an individual citizen, you have almost no information, or you have way too much information, right? If you put it, if you find some way to say, yes, I'd like to volunteer, and then ten thousand organizations come at you. And so, the idea behind this, this match was to develop a more sophisticated algorithm. It's not just, okay, you're interested in volunteering, here are ten thousand volunteer opportunities, but, but you'd be able to indicate in the, in the thing, okay, I am only available Tuesdays, and I'm only available to do stuff online only, and I hate children, but I love animals, right? So, you can, you can answer a bunch of questions that are natural questions to you, not, not things like, I have workers' comp insurance already, but, you know, things that are natural questions, and same thing for the, for the volunteer organization, and then you would be able to optimize that match. But also be able to rate each other, because for many vol, for many organizations that need volunteers, they need, if you, if you say you're going to come and deliver food as part of Meals on Wheels, and you don't show up, then somebody's not eating. And so, it's, it's, it's really critical that the, that the system be able to signal for both sides of the, of the transaction, that the other side is real. So, that there, if you took this up several levels, it could be, it could be really powerful. But it would have to be like, be like that. I think the group was, at least at the time, trying to explore all the other apps that are out there on the volunteer side, and they didn't find any that were at that level. So, it could, it could be, it could be, it could be a real possible one. The transportation one, I think, I think it was both, both, you're correct, but also that there are now six cities in the country that are already doing this, as part of the the Smart City Challenge from the Obama administration. So, even, even if we could pull it off, it's not, it wouldn't, even though it's completely innovative in, you know, here and in the world, it's not, there are already other governments that are undertaking that work, so.
Yeah, I just, I'm just sorry, I just think, like, for example, the, the volunteer opportunities, I like math, what can I do? Something as simple as that. So, you get tutor opportunities, so I think with a, with the interface of accessing it, you might be able, you, you could be able to get to that, that point. So, not very complicated, but it meets the needs of the volunteer to want to contribute, whether they think their strengths are, but also the organization wants to match up those strengths. And I think it builds a better relationship, and the volunteers will show up if it's something they're truly interested in. And you also may have to have the volunteer organizations, if they do have, you know, you need to be here, we, you're, you know, there may be some phone calls to the person who volunteered, are you going to show up? You know, some, some of that type of monitoring, it's, some of the manual stuff may still have to happen.
Now, the, the group is also reconceptualizing, to some extent, volunteering, which was, okay, I mean, I don't want to go at all to Meals on Wheels, but, but, you know, I am, I'm an attorney, and I'm happy to review bylaws, revisions.
Right.
I'm happy to spend a half an hour reviewing bylaws, revisions, for any organization that deals with animals, not children, or whatever, you know, so I can lay that out, and then I just get that one task, and I'm in and out, I can do it, you know, I can do it while I'm getting coffee or whatever. So, to dramatically expand the scope of what we even think about as volunteering, to get, to be more kind of real-time on demand.
Right.
Just a brief comment, Mayor, and thanks for, you and John, for the update on this, because it's, I've been watching your either Twitter posts or the city's Twitter posts showing the, the activity going on, and I just think it's, it's, the process itself is the engagement in the community, and getting those ideas, and listening to them, and seeing how they could further the city. It's really, I'm just sitting back enjoying, watching it, and I, I look through these, and they're all kind of like, freaking, you know, there's a few of them, like, well, let's just go do that anyway, right? You want to, you want to, there's some really good ideas. I did pick up on the whole volunteerism and the duty-related, you know, volunteerism, and it's really aimed at, at bettering, all of these are really aimed at bettering the community in some way, and I think it's just, it's just a pleasure to kind of watch and observe, and, you know, in any way to continue rooting on the process, and it sounds like the process itself is a, is a quality one, and we're getting lots of feedback from walking and, and talking to folks, to bringing in the wide array of folks you brought in from the Changemakers perspective. It's been a really pleasure to watch, and I'm looking forward to kind of seeing the outcomes in, from it, so, it's a great job, I love it.
Anything further? Good, great, then we'll, we'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, council calendar, Ms. Merlin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Couple of events coming up. This Sat, this Sunday is the Tower Bridge Dinner, starts at four thirty, and that's on the Tower Bridge. Then, next Wednesday is the YEDF Fall 2017 Cannabis Regulation Presentation in Davis, that starts at four o'clock. And then Saturday, September thirtieth, and Sunday, October first, is the West Sacramento Cycle Lacrosse Event. And that's it for calendar.
All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Yes, there is a memo on the dais that each one of you received. It's a end-of-session, end-of-session legislative summary. It focuses on the several key bills that staff had been tracking, and that the council had weighed in over the session, just to give some background on the status of those bills.
Any questions? City manager report? All right, and then for the city attorney's daughter, any city attorney report? All right, staff direction, members of the council, future agenda item requests. Ms. Roscoe, did you have?
Uh, yeah, actually.
I know, is our, is our customary practice and policy to have written requests in, in this item. I think this is Mr. Roscoe's first, first, first request, so I think it's a relatively straightforward one, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this week, several council members in the mayor attended a, a press conference in support of the Dreamers, and in support of the Dream Act 2017. And I've been in communication with the council member Abel Guillen out of Oakland, and I understand that their council unanimously, or at least majority, had passed a resolution essentially stating that they support and urging Congress to support the Dream Act. And I would like to know, I would like staff to look further into whether or not that would be a good direction for our city, and perhaps doing the same. And I can provide the draft model resolution from their council, if that would assist.
All right, so with, with, with the resolution from another city, or two, or twenty, it should be a, I'm guessing you're indicating that it's a de minimis staff effort? The point of the future agenda item requests item, which we don't, we don't often have here, is, is generally as a matter of courtesy and democracy, we try to empower all members of the council to be able to put things, items on the agenda, but also to not have, you know, staff diverted from their core responsibilities, or the strategic plan. So, the point of the future agenda item requests item on our agenda is for the city manager to be able to indicate to us, yes, that that is a, that's a, that's a lot of work, what you want to do, or it's not, and then for the council to, to, to say okay or not to putting it on the agenda in the future, so.
Yeah, I think if we have some samples to, to look at, I don't think it should be a big lift to be able to bring that back.
All right, is, is there any objection or concern? Okay. All right, then with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, yes.
May, may I ask that we adjourn in the memory of the three children that were lost just last week, and also in honor of our first responders, the teachers, the spiritual community, and just our community at large, because it was just a week ago. So, I'd like to, if I could ask our council to, to adjourn in their memory, and to honor those that are here dealing with this.
Thank you. So, that's the motion by Councilmember Sandin, is there a second?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and the, and the meeting is adjourned in their memory and in their honor.[1692.88]